Okay, well, I will call the meeting to order as councillor hurl is getting set up. We can take care of some of the preliminaries. Welcome to our last meeting to discuss the 2026 budget. Anyone who's joining remotely, we'd ask you to change your name displayed to be your first and last name. So we know who we're talking to. Anyone who speaks to is addressing the council, we again ask you to state your name and where you live. We ask that you keep your questions or comments to three minutes. If you're speaking about a specific agenda item, we would ask you to keep your comments germane to that topic. And anyone who wishes to speak must be called on by the mayor. You may make a statement or ask questions, but if you have multiple questions. Get them all out at once, so we can then move to the next person or to discuss them as we see fit. If you speak out of turn, discuss non-germane topics, go on too long, etc. You may be interrupted and asked to adjust your comments or behavior. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I assume that the agenda is acceptable to all members and we'll consider the agenda adopted. And then next up, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. As with other items on the agenda, we'd ask you to hold time limit of two of three minutes. And I see Peter Kelman, you've got your hand up, so we'll start with you.
I have a question and depending on the answer, I may have some more to say. Is the matter of a local options tax going to be discussed? I don't see it on the agenda, but is there some plan to discuss it in relationship to the budget?
It is not on the agenda. I do not know if a member of the council is going to to propose it. It there is a question raised among by one of the council members who. And the answer included the possibility of a local option tax.
Well, since it may not be discussed, I would like to just make a brief statement about it. I think that the city councils should vote tonight to put a 1% local option tax on the town meeting ballot. It should be up to the voters who, after all, are direct or indirect taxpayers. And yes, as Carrie Brown said, it is a aggressive tax, but so is every other tax, including property taxes and supposedly progressive income taxes. Perhaps in an ideal world, we could avoid such taxes, but we don't live in that world. No matter what Montpelier merchants may claim, and I'm not sure that they do, an additional 1% sales tax is not going to keep many people from shopping in Montpelier, especially since Barry City, Berlin, Waterbury and Stowe all have such a tax. Such a tax will mainly affect tourists and other visitors who are unlikely to know or care about it. Also legislators and people who are here for legislative session. The city manager explained this, I think at the the last week's meeting, that the council could put on the ballot and the so the public could weigh in on this matter. And if the council was later persuaded by arguments they hear, they could remove it. The council chose not even to put it on the ballot. I don't understand that. Leave it up to the voters. Now, I've heard it said that there are people, city councillors, who are in fact in favor of it, but are afraid that if it's just put on the ballot without appropriate explanation, it'll be voted down. Well, let's provide the appropriate explanation. We've got more than a month to do it. We got more than a month to explain what I just said and more. Have some respect for the voters. And if it does get voted down, well, then so be it. But to wait another year to do it, when that is, that is leaving money on the table. At a time when you are cutting parts of the budget that are going to really hurt, why not look at a clear, easy source of revenue? And I'll repeat this if this is later, comes up later. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Anybody else online who wishes to be heard? I'm not seeing any hands raised, but I'll pause. Meanwhile, is there anyone in the room would like to be heard? Elizabeth.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Parker and the senior warden at Christ Episcopal Church. Christ Church is providing daytime warming space Monday through Friday. We just voted last night to continue that through March, the end of March. At some point, we hope it will move to the Methodist Church. However, logistically, we cannot do this on the weekends due to events and services. Christ Church is deeply disturbed that unhoused members of our community do not have a daytime warming shelter for two days on the weekend. We are in the process of writing a letter to you to this effect that other Montpelier churches and businesses are interested in signing as well. One of the barriers to having a weekend day shelter is its location. While it would be ideal to have one location to use daily, winter continues with daytime temperatures below freezing. A solution is needed now. I am sure that you know the Unitarian Church has opened its doors on nights when temperatures are below 10 degrees. There is now, there are now 40 volunteers participating in that overnight overflow shelter. If a weekend day shelter location can be determined, I am sure that volunteers would be willing to step up to help until such time as the Good Samaritan Haven can organize staffing. While the temperatures are now rising from this most recent cold snap, we know that February is another cold month. The state of Vermont appreciates that we have an obligation to provide warming shelter 24/7. Let's find an interim solution while long-term solutions are worked out. Give us space to this effort and find and the volunteers will come. Montpelier has many compassionate citizens. Please do not leave people in the cold on the weekends for 12 hours a day. Please take action to provide a space for this essential humanitarian effort. Put yourself in their shoes. How would you manage a 12-hour day under these circumstances? Please allow a municipal space to be available for a weekend daytime warming shelter through at least the end of March. And then I end with the golden rule. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Is this the secretary's desk or I see John is online, so I was trying to give this to him.
One of our staff people.
Okay, sure.
I came tonight to tell you.
Could you start by introducing yourself?
Certainly, I'm sorry. Tina Muncy, I live in Montpelier.
Thank you.
And I came tonight to tell you or remind you, if you already know, that there are a good many people in Montpelier that are having trouble paying their bills and consequently paying their taxes. And there are a lot of them are in my age category. They're on a fixed income and they've been paying their taxes for years. And so I was particularly pleased last week when the city manager, after having been asked at the last two meetings, brought in a budget that was somewhere near what you had asked for in a raise. And then I was equally pleased to hear councillor Heaney suggest that that budget should be accepted. And then some of you added something, a position back into the budget. And I would like to say, maybe you know things that I don't, I'm sure you do. And maybe you feel that that position is very crucial to the operation of the city of Montpelier. And if that's true, I wouldn't argue with you. But then I'd suggest you please find another position that is of equal financial value to take out of the budget so that you're back to the percentage that you asked the city manager to produce for you for an increase in the budget. And I love Montpelier and I love the people in Montpelier. And if you don't, you're going down a road you started several years ago of changing the culture of Montpelier. And soon only the wealthy will be able to live here. And that's sad. And I apologize, this is on the agenda, but last week, if you didn't talk at the beginning, I didn't know when you could talk. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Steve.
Steve Whitaker, Montpelier. I just think that looking at the lack of courage, the lack of diligence of what you were elected to do, the courage and the guts to do what has to get done is really disturbing. It's there's a moral imperative here that you've cut the social worker, the homeless 50,000. You've done nothing about the bathrooms. You're locking City Hall when people are left outside waiting for the bus to the shelter. That you've forgotten your morals. You've forgotten you're undermining your own dignity by, you know, protecting this overpriced clan of people and limiting us to three minutes while they get to talk forever about how indispensable they are. You know, give me a friggin break, you know? Let's have a little justice mayor and, you know, you can stand behind your rules, but you're embarrassing yourself.
Thank you.
Mayor, is there a public comment before the budget?
We will have public comment during the budget discussion, yes. All right, is there anybody else who's looking to make a comment to have something that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And we can move to the audit report. Sarah, I assume you're coming up for this?
Director, here tonight are our auditors online, Ron Smith from RHR and Smith. He will be giving the presentation about the audit report.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Just a minute.
Sarah, do you have the PowerPoint up on it so everybody sees it? Yep, here it comes. Why don't you go down to the next side, Sarah? So I'm Ron Smith, I'm principal with our HR Smith and Company. I've been doing this profession, especially in your world that you live in in government for over 35 years. And I have the pleasure of working with 80-plus professionals at our company. And I I am born and raised in the town of St. Johnsberry, Vermont. Chris Matt, who's with me, who helped out with the audit, born and raised in the town of Waterford, Vermont. And Heather Hunter is joining us here right now, who also is part of our audit team, putting this presentation together. And we have in front of us.
Yeah. Can you suspend for a moment, please? It doesn't seem like it's shared in our Zoom yet. Oh.
In fact, I can see it for sure.
Okay, oh, here we go. I don't know what happened, but I've got it now. Thanks.
So so you have in front of you the 6:30 24 audit. We certainly before we start, thanks, Sarah, Heather, who made all of this possible, the delivery of the information, all the things that Montpelier has going on. The one thing, you know, that certainly is, you know, a major, you know, emphasis this year is a federal single audit because you guys spent more than three quarters of a million dollars of federal funds that's run through the city, which we had to expand our audit this year, you know, and including the financial statement audit, which is what you're looking at as the results of the 6:30 24, the presentation of the balance sheet, you know, for the city of Montpelier. And the first to start off, the city of Montpelier got our highest opinion out there. It's an unmodified opinion. If we had problems with management, if we saw things like fraud, you know, defalcation, things like that, that would cause us to certainly look, possibly alter the scope of our engagement, you know, and turning into something else, we didn't see that. So congratulations, you received our highest opinion. We'd have to state that in the auditor's report, that certainly was not. And again, with our communication to you all and management, you know, that we had no disagreements, you know, that certainly became of it. This was an exercise that, you know, has been going on for about four months, four and a half months. And you're certainly seeing the finality of the numbers. So I'm going to start with the first column, the general fund. You know, the city, you know, that's the regular operating budget for the city. City had about $9.7 million, you know, of everything that it owned, you know, is the best way that I can say it, against obligations, liabilities, pooled cash for all the other funds in various businesses that you operate at that city. You know, and based upon removal of that, it leaves you with fund balance surplus. You know, there's many words associated that in the world of government of about $2.1 million, you know, from for June 30 24. That's exactly where you landed, you all, last year on June 30 23, okay? And the one really of particular significance is the unassigned fund balance. And that's a, that's the $1.2 million. I'm the third number up in the first column of the general fund. That's actually about a $200,000 increase of where it was the year before and largely impact to the revenue collections that came into the city more than what you estimated. Government charges for service, investment earnings, I think, were the two primary, you know, contributors to why your why your fund balance grew by $200,000. But as you can see, you've got other committed and restricted funds, you know, that exist for the city. And some of those is like, you know, as I recall, there's like a restoration fund, you know, that's in that that math, I'm actually just getting, you know, to the pages and the details of your audit report that you won't see. You know, but you also have various donations for police, fire, canine, ambulance, various donations in there. And then you've got for your district heat, you know, you have money set aside for district heat. The Montpelier Commission's Recovery and Resilience, $100,000. That's making up a variety, you know, of that 150 and $550,000. It's money that the city, you know, has set aside for those various projects. And you can see to the right of those columns, you know, various other funds that the city has. And really, there's, you know, nothing really significant to report there. The city continues to fund its capital projects. Sadly, Mother Nature wreaked havoc on the state of Vermont, took no prisoners in Montpelier. You know, you have the FEMA fund that was set up for that. There was an injection of cash in there to take care of some of the major infrastructure repairs that you've had to do. That's going to be an ongoing battle like many other Vermont communities. So all these funds are really separated in the different areas, you know, that you have. I'm going to go back to the general fund here and then, you know, a couple of slides further on down the road. Because our principle and standards that are set by various, you know, regulatory organizations that we go by state that you ought to have 30, 60, 90 days of your operating budget sitting in unassigned funds or surplus. Where does the city of Montpelier fall on that side? About 30 days of your surplus is sitting there, which is actually about right where it was, you know, the year before. I believe your fund balance policy and Sarah and Heather can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it states at basically 15, 16% or or 60 days, correct folks? Heather, Sarah?
Yep, it's 15% of budget expenditures.
Which would which would equate pretty much to, you know, to 60 days of that operating budget. So you're not there. We've done the audit for a few years in the city of Montpelier. I'm not sure you've ever been there, you know, because of the, you know, variety of things that you do. A lot of your municipalities that you'll see in your slide aren't there as well. We tried to put some comparative, you know, municipalities up there so you can kind of see where they stand financially compared to you guys in a slide here, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So Sarah, can you move down to the next page? So here's basically a comparison of everything that you, you know, during the course of the year. There's really nothing, it's color coded where green is. You can see kind of a significant, you know, jump in your assets, you know, over the past five years. That's largely impact to the to the portfolio that you had, the FEMA funds that you, you know, have gotten in. Just things like that that are causing your general fund with pooled cash or a variety of other reasons. Their balance sheet is certainly as you, as you become more, you know, complicated in the services that you provide and put your city back together and offer the other various services that you have, you know, at the city. That that money is pooled and that certainly, I believe, is the biggest impact for the jump of the of your general fixed assets and the general fund fixed assets for the past five years. Sarah, can you go to the next one, please? Here's liabilities, you know, that pooled cash obligations, monies that you're moving around at the city, you know, because of the pooled cash, that's really kind of what the, you know, is the representation, you know, of that is. And to kind of put the context with the color, Sarah, can you can you just move back two pages to the balance sheet? The color chart corresponding you all to that first column, to the asset section in your general fund and the access section in your liability fund. That's what we're marrying the colors to, to just give you kind of a flavor of the representation of the past five years. And every one of those numbers is getting bigger at the city of Montpelier is the best way I can say it. And that's the numbers that are representative of those two slides. Sarah, can you go to the to the next slide after the equity? And here, here's a a unassigned fund balance comparison that you can kind of see. There's a other depictive slide here, a couple of slides down the road that talks about the 30 days that I did. But but you can see, you know, given your unassigned fund balance and your other, the restricted fund balances, those various pockets of money that you've got reserved sitting in your general fund that just haven't been spent at 6:30 24, but were obligated, they'll be spent the following year or following fiscal years, you know, that you have out there. There's the color chart, you know, that really kind of depicts those, that equity section of your balance sheet. Next slide, Sarah. And there's the percentages like I was just talking about, compared to your operating 15 million-ish dollars operating budget in '24 for the city, about another $2 million of capital, you know, that got moved around. So and that's really important too as well, you know, because of the movement, you know, the 2021 package of the Build Back America, you know, from the previous presidential administration. This presidential administration is focusing a lot on infrastructure too. I'm interested to see how that goes over the next year, you know, with that. But, you know, there's there's really the unassigned percentages of budgeted expenditures. And I think capital is a big one that you guys have focused in on the past few years. And, you know, I think that that's a conversation in itself, but that'll just kind of show you, you know, what I was talking about. You'll see another slide here, you know, in a few minutes, just kind of like where your fund balances stand with other municipalities of the size of the city of Montpelier. Sarah, can you go to the next one, please? And here's really the money that's coming through the door, out the door, and various pockets of the money. When you see your general fund, there's $18 million, you know, excuse me, Sarah, can you blow that up? I think it's $18 million. I just want to make sure I got the right one before the transfers and all that. And then you can see what's. You've got two. Or four, what we call other financing sources and uses. You know, I'm looking at about the fourth number up from the bottom, you all, you know, where that money is transferred out to various capital projects. So there's kind of the money coming in the door, the money going out the door that I was talking about, you know, and 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 it depicts all your columns, you know, for the various services that you provide. And 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 for Sarah, if you can just go up to a little bit so you can see the headers that I can't see on my screen. The other governmental funds you all, you know, in your, in your. The other governmental funds you all, you know, in your, in your actual full audit report, there's supplementary information in there. You're going to find out that that's made of various reserve accounts. You know, that's made of cemetery accounts or trust funds that you're holding in trust at the city. You know, so that's the predominant of what those other governmental funds are. And clearly you can see the other funds of the special businesses that you operate at the city. Next fund, Sarah, uh, next slide, Sarah. Here's the, we always like to put into this one, it really, what it does is confirm obvious in the world of government. You know, and that's a color chart of the money that's coming in the door that we just talked about. Green is a representation of property taxes, you know, at the city. You can see that that clearly makes up seventy three percent of all the money that comes through the door there. And other various, whether it be charges for services, other monies that you have with relationships between state government, you know, and, and, and other municipalities and any interlocal agreements. You know, you can see kind of the breakdown of the money coming into your door, but largely, you know, the biggest breakdown is the property taxation money that the city collects to fund its services that it provides. Next one, Sarah. And then the money going out the door, and you're going to see just kind of, um, you know, just a, 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 a glimpse of, of what it is. Usually the two biggest ones in the area of government are public works and public safety. You can kind of get the, you know, the, um, uh, you know, the, 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 the picture, you know, of really kind of that, that you're kind of following suit in that pattern. And if there's another slide that some people put in there, I'm not sure I would recommend it because it's hard to compare even a municipality to another municipality, you know, for many reasons, and I don't like to do that, you know, but you could have another slide in there for functional expenses. Benefits, you know, service, you know, supplies, things like that, you know, that you have there for various departments there. We call them functional expenses, and you would probably find out that close to eighty percent, you know, if that pie chart was in here, was made up of salaries and benefits like other governments. Next, uh, next slide, Sarah. And here's really, here, here's really a, 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 an article, you know, I had to come to talk about an article, but here's really a slide here. You know, kind of comparing, you know, your, your general fund budget to other municipalities, you know, similar of size, you know, uh, you know, the city of Montpelier, and you can kind of see where you stack up. You know, the city of South Burlington, I can tell you firsthand experience, they've worked very hard to get that fourteen percent, which is representative of about sixty days of their operating budget, which is your goal as well. They've worked hard over the past years to, you know, to do that. You know, clearly you're at about thirty days and, and, and you've maintained that thirty days. You've actually crept into that thirty days and certainly, again, you know, that's been through some fiscal prudence, you know, of the city to do that. But this will kind of give you, you know, a, 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 an idea of some of your counterparts and, you know, really where they stand with unassigned fund balance, which is always an important, you know, topic of commerce every year as you put budgets together that I understand that you're doing now. Next one, Sarah. And really a lot of debt, debt per capita. I mean, this one, I mean, there's a statute that certainly limits what a municipality can have based upon its grand list and an amount and a percentage, you know, to that. You know, the, 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 the city certainly has used debt in the past few years, you know, as, um, as a vehicle, you know, to, you know, to, to, to provide infrastructure, putting your city back together. I believe you have a grant anticipation note out there, anticipation of funding from FEMA and things like that out there. So debt's very common, and what we try to do is just kind of put a slide together just to show you in comparison what your debt portfolio is to other municipalities. So, and, and there's really nothing there on there that alarms me about the city of Montpelier's debt portfolio. And is that it, Sarah? Was that the last slide?
That is the last slide.
Yeah, so that's a lot to digest, you all, with ninety something plus pages, you know, there. But that's pretty much the highlight of the, uh, financial statement audit. We had no disagreements, you know, with management. Sarah and Heather, you know, they, they offered us the information the way we needed it so we can sit here in confidence and have these conversations with you all. So, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have of me or us.
Thanks, Ron. I'll look around and see if there are any members of the council who have any questions. It's, it's a lot to digest.
If there's any follow-up questions, Jack, Heather, Sarah, just let me know, you know, whatever we got to do, whatever we can do to, you know, certainly, you know, make everybody because it is a lot to digest, trust us, you know, so whatever we can do if there's any follow-up questions, just let us know.
The bottom line, I think I'm getting from you is that you're endorsing and supporting the, uh, professionalism and operations of our finance office and, and how they're managing our funds.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Lauren?
Just thank you to the whole finance team and the whole team. I mean, just the amount of money, especially with the flooding and everything has been huge. So, you know, it's been an absolute amount of work. And hopefully with the restructuring happening, you know, some great work, but really appreciate it.
A property owner, like one of the other great towns of the Northeast Kingdom, you know, who had three floods of the century in the past year, you know, up there. I don't think people realize how traumatic it is when you go through some, an event like that and have to maintain finances. I got great friends on those various boards up there. That is, that, that, that is such a experience for a municipality to go through. And hats off to the city of Montpelier to opening up your streets again for business, so.
Thanks, Ron. I echo what Lauren said. Great work, you guys. We really rely on the professionalism of the finance department to, uh, keep the ship, keep the ship going.
Thank you. I could ask for anybody else to have weathered the storm with it, and it's been, uh, well, two years for me. Um, but this is, um, I couldn't ask for better team. Thank you.
Thanks.
Everybody be well.
Thanks.
Sarah, let us know if there's any follow-up.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the audit? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Thanks, Sarah. All right, next up we have petitions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had three petitions come in. I don't know whether the city clerk's going to jump on here, but I can help. Uh, we had three petitions come in, one for the Kellogg Hubbard Library, one for Mosaic, and one for a non-binding article, uh, concerning Palestine. They're on our draft warning for, uh, Articles Eight and Article Nine and Article Twelve respectively. Uh, and you'll be dealing with that warning later, so all you have to do, uh, they all meet legal signatures. They're all legal, legally, uh, legal petitions. John, John is on. Do you want to add anything more to this?
Oh, there's not really anything to add. I think you covered it, honestly. It's just, just the three, and they're pretty, uh, business as usual.
So we need to vote to accept these or do we, uh? Okay, is there a motion to accept these petitions?
I'll move to accept the petitions.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Bond necessity resolution.
This is another, uh, formality that you really need to do if we're going to issue bond. As you know, we're proposing for a new fire ladder truck. Public hearing is coming up next. A necessity resolution is simply a resolution from the city council saying that you intend to issue a bond and borrow that you don't have the funds on hand to pay for it with cash. It's not saying that, you know, you're applying that it's a necessity that we do this or of yours. It's the, it's a financial necessity to issue a bond. Uh, but it's something that, uh, any bonding agents, so we need to do that in order to issue our bonds, and you have to do it in advance of the vote.
Any questions for, or comments for anyone on the council? Is there a motion to, uh, adopt the necessity resolution, which is in our packets?
So moved.
All right, and who's this? So Lauren, you're the motion, you're, are you the second, Carrie? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, next we're on to, uh, the first public hearing for, uh, bonds, and I will open the public hearing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're only proposing one bond this year is for a fire ladder truck to replace a very old one. Uh, we've been discussing this for several years. And Chief Libby is online, uh, and can, uh, maybe explain the need for it a little bit more. We're estimating a two point two million dollar cost to purchase this. We're seeking grants to reduce that, but making sure that we have enough funds. I think as we've told you in the past, there's a two to three year lead time for these items. So the sooner we approve the purchase, then we can make a, make an order. Uh, then we can freeze the price at today's price, but it will still be a number of years before we receive it and actually spend the money. But, uh, but the one we have is had a lot of repairs. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Libby for a second, and then obviously we'll take public comment.
You know, thanks, chief.
Thank you. Um, as the city manager stated, the truck that we operate currently, by the time it's replaced, will be over thirty years old. Um, many changes in the industry and safety standards have come into play since that truck was first put into service. The truck is, being that old, obviously significant cost of, uh, maintenance and upkeep, um, annually, as you probably are aware. The ladder, the aerial devices have to be recertified. Um, for the second year in a row, we're putting money into it to make it pass certification, um, because it's failed. So what we're asking is for the opportunity to bond for replacement of this truck. As the city manager stated, it's a a long line to get into to receive the truck. Um, three years is probably no, no sooner than three years before we receive it. So continue to, to, uh, put money into the truck and it being thirty years old, it's, it's tired. Um, obviously the need for a ladder truck in a city such as Montpelier, you know, tall buildings, wide sidewalks, setbacks, streets, snow, um, makes getting to upper floors of a building, uh, the roof of a building or using a master stream devices to, to deploy water onto a large fire all necessitate the need for such a piece of apparatus.
Thanks, chief. Uh, yes, I, when I first went on the council, it was, must have been two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen. I had a tour of the police, of the fire department, and at that time we were told we should be looking at a new, new ladder truck in, in a year or two. And here we are, it'll be almost ten years later by the time we get it. When we had the, uh, fire down at RK Miles, I saw our truck and many other ladder trucks in operation, and they were really effective at, uh, distributing the water over a large, over the concentrated area, so I appreciate that. Um, any members of the council with any questions?
What is the, uh, what's the two point two based on? I mean, if it's a three-year process, lately, everything we've contracted for has gone up in price. How is it quoted and when do we pay for it and so on?
The, uh, we put together a truck committee to look at the needs of what the truck is, how it serves us. Met with a manufacturer to, uh, establish a price for the bond. Um, so the two point two is based on a two thousand twenty five MSRP of that truck as designed.
As I understand it, we order it this year, then we set the price, so we're, we're buying, is that correct, chief?
Yes. Yep.
So it's not going to inflate once we've ordered it.
What do we spend this day? Or when we order it?
How much would we be spending this year, chief?
I couldn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
The question is how much are we spending this year when we order? Are we putting money down?
Uh, I'm not aware of a deposit requirement on it.
So we're not paying anything until we take delivery years in the future.
So the bond payments would then show up in those subsequent budgets.
Yep.
We've factored them into our equipment plan for the years that they're scheduled to come, but they
Any other questions from members of the council? All right, Peter Kelman.
Um, chief, um, you, you said tall buildings. We actually don't have all that many really tall buildings. Supposing, uh, we did start to have more buildings of five stories or more, would this truck, uh, be able to handle that? Because, I mean, for example, I think five-story buildings were part of a, one of the proposals for Country Club Road. Just want to make sure that if you're ordering a truck that's going to last another thirty years, that, uh, it anticipates having some somewhat taller buildings.
Yeah, the aerial apparatus that we currently have is labeled as a seventy-plus foot. This would be a hundred foot, um, and in part because of larger buildings, um, looking at setbacks on the sidewalks, cars parked, and really not being able to reach some of the buildings that we currently have effectively. And also, if you look at accessing church steeples and things like that, that may not be a total height of a building where we consider living or occupied space, but certainly access issues that I consider for strategic operations.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe. Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, excellent.
Excellent. First time in three times.
Yeah.
Hey, I was just wondering, I know that we haven't discussed what the specs that Chief Libby is looking for for the trucks. Has he considered a reconditioned truck as an alternative that might be less expensive?
Chief?
We haven't looked specifically at any one reconditioned truck. Um, the market right now is very competitive to, to get a reconditioned truck. But we haven't looked specifically at reconditioned apparatus.
Could we consider that as an alternative?
If that was, if that's the direction that we're sent on.
The issue is length of, you know, one of the issues with this, and, and I think we could certainly look at all the options. One of the issues is length of life, expected length of life, as we mentioned. And we bought the last one new, we've gotten, we will have had over thirty years out of it. We were certainly expecting to get twenty plus possibly more out of, out of this. So a reconditioned vehicle doesn't have the same lifespan, so that would be the, the change. And how soon will we be coming back to voters for another one?
Additionally, we have some limitations with the size of the station, um, that it limits the overall height of the truck. So it would be a specialized build to find or seek out the right truck that would fit in, inside the doors.
Uh-huh. Okay, thanks. Uh, members of the council, do we have any other questions? Somebody? Do we need to have a second or a public hearing?
No, the, so you're, we, we have a public hearing typically to help people get educated and sort of, you know, give you guidance, whether you want to go ahead. There will be a second bond and budget informational hearing, the last meeting of February within ten days, so that people can become informed on what they vote on. This is just, I'm not even sure it's legally required. We just usually do it. We hold a public hearing on any bonds.
And so do we have to put this on the, uh, do we have to vote to approve this?
Well, you'll be putting it out when you approve the ballot. It'll be on, it's on the draft ballot, so you can be approving. This is really a public hearing, just have a public hearing.
All right. Thank you. In that case, I will close the public hearing and move on to the second public hearing on the budget, and I'll open that public hearing.
So I was going to do a little present, a shorter presentation than last week.
Great.
Thank you. This is a similar version to what you saw last week, only updated with the the current state of the budget as per the council votes. Last week, I did shorten it up somewhat and also put a couple of new pieces of information in. Why am I not? There we go. So when we start the budget, this, we we do have goals, implementing our strategic plan, increasing our capital plan, prioritizing public safety and public works and keeping the tax rate as low as possible. Those were the directions that the city council provided this year. So again, not going to read all through this, but we have we do have a strategic plan that we spent a fair amount of time on and that we track and guides our work throughout the years. Our main categories are building and maintaining our infrastructure, creating more housing, rebuilding, planning for future resilience and and good environmental stewardship, advancing the economy for the community and improving public self, health and safety for all. And most of what we do falls into those categories and we try to track that during the year. So why was this year so so challenging? I've gone through this all in detail, but when we started the budget, when we took a look at all the things we had cut last year that we'd hoped to restore, and we also took a look at all the built in costs that had gone up, we would have needed a 24% tax increase to fund all of that. That clearly was not gonna gonna go anywhere. And so we needed to make some pretty big decisions to to get a budget to you all. We have parking revenues, delayed inflation. One of the big effects, of course, was that we had a very large school tax increase last year. So therefore, the overall tax increase was high. Some people were feeling it. You know, we've heard comments about that tonight, reappraisal, people's values had gone up. We've had an increase in service demand. So even though we're we're short on costs, we still have demands to to deliver services. And we have a large number of projects, including flood recovery. Flood recovery projects. So a lot of demands on our staff and our resources. So where are we? After after last week, we are looking at a budget that is up about 4.7% overall. The taxes needed for the city portion of the budget would be 3.52% increase. When you add in our ballot items, including one that we moved out of the budget onto the ballot, we are at a 4.77% increase. And then we are would be looking at water and sewer rates at 3.5% increase plus the 1% infrastructure surcharge. So that's where we are at as of last week. We just talked about the bond. There's one proposed bond. Shall we authorize the voters to approve the $2.2 million for an aerial ladder truck? Just quickly, I'm not going to read them all, but we have a large amount of city facilities that we take care of, manage, operate and have to have to account for. This is the list. We've all seen this before. The public has seen this before. Additionally, we have our sidewalks, our roads, our streetlights, our water mains, our sewer veins, stormwater. All those things, these are all things that contribute. And, you know, the auditor mentioned earlier the difficulty in in comparing towns, you know, you can look at population and Berry Town's a good example. They have similar population to us, but you know, they don't really have sidewalks. They don't really have streetlights. They don't really have, you know, downtown to maintain. So, you know, it's a whole different whole different animal, even though the populations, so they just not to pick on them, just those are the things that make each community unique. And our demands are up, our police calls are up, dispatch calls are up, fire calls are up. The weather never changes regardless of the tax rate. We get what we get for weather. We certainly need more more capital funding. We've had a lot of money coming through. You just heard the audit, the work that our finance staff does. And we handle about 300 permits. Rec programs are up. All our sort of enhancement programs are up as well. So that's the backdrop. When we laid out the budget, we identified some key actions that needed to happen and the budget is built on, you know, these actions. One is increasing the downtown improvement district tax. One is increasing ambulance contract rates. One is implementing a new non treatment, no treatment ambulance fee. One is increasing our increasing our general ambulance fees to match our region. One is eliminating the sprinkle of tax credit for commercial buildings and one is moving the community fund appropriation to the budget. So what what you've already, well, the ballot will include the D I, unless you change, the ballot would include the DID chat tax change and the appropriation, community fund appropriation on the ballot. We've already increased the contract rate to the towns, but the other two, the other three actions would will require city council action after the budget is approved. So just, you know, they will come back in March to do the rest of the work for the budget that we will have to consider. So just taking a look at the kinds of things, these are the revenue adjustments that we made to come up with our original budget. And you've seen all of those. This was the original cuts that were made. These are not restoration. So I want to be clear, we in prior presentations, you've seen the long list of things we didn't restore from prior years. This was just things that were in our original base budget that we cut this year to get to our original proposal. So you can see the amount of funds from different departments, different operations, different lines that were taken just to get to our initial proposal. And and then these are still part of that, that that initial proposal. So all of those were in the 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 draft that you got in December, where we have a 6.94% tax increase. And then based on the discussions last week, we proposed, we brought in the lower proposal and then you made one add back. So this is currently the the list of proposals, reductions on the table from the initial reduction. So staff position in the city manager's office, not funding the 17th patrol officer, not not purchasing an EV cruiser and getting a hybrid instead, shaving some overtime in fire and DPW. So that's basically where we are at. That brings us to the budget that we have, the 4.77% including the ballot items. Ron just talked about this, but our our general fund budget is, as he said, is primarily funded by property taxes. If we look at our our expenses, it's really is public safety and infrastructure, including DPW. Those are the other big categories. Personnel is really our biggest cost, what do you, what do you call them? Functional categories? Remember that one. So so we are a labor intensive business. No surprise that that things like health insurances, which I failed to mention, were one of the big drivers, that there's 23% increase in health insurance. So when we have personnel related costs, those really drive our budget quite a bit. Just taking a quick look at our expenses broken down more by functional areas, apartments, just so you can see really where different departments and different functions fall. Again, really jumps right out at you, police, dispatch, fire, EMS, public works and the capital plan. And then our general government services are really where where the money is. Capital plan, the, let me see if I can get this right, the the maroon big bar is the total funding. The sort of purplish smaller bar is how much is debt and then the the yellow line is the total of the two. So you can see we have steadily been improving improving our total number. And then the line that that's that goes through the bars is the equipment dollars. So you can see that our total funding for all of this has been you know, we've had some ups and downs, but generally it's on the trajectory going up over a period of time. You can see that the annual funding for infrastructure, the the maroon bars is has been on a trajectory going up. But it did drop. We we clear about that. The COVID and and the flood certainly did that. And now we are, you know, on the way of going going back up and projecting to go up. So see the the last line before it starts saying proposed, FY26 proposed is where we are. So we are getting back up to where we were prior and and working our way up. So we talk a lot about employees, number of employees. As I said, we're employee driven business. Based on the the decisions made last week, we are currently at 112.96 FTE. That that's a term of our full time equivalent. So a half time employee would be a point five. So it doesn't mean we have 112 full time people, it means the equivalent. So just people understand that. That is down over four from last year. Down another five from the year before. So we've we've had a net 7% next net staff production since FY24. We hear a lot about what the staffing was in FY19. I think the last year Mayor Hall was the mayor. That was 112.81. So we're essentially at the exact same staffing level as it was at that time.
And this includes the cuts that we
That is after with with the actions that were made at the last council meeting. That's where we are now. So just taking a look at our tax bill, this this takes each area of our budget, subtracts out any related revenues that are that are attributed to those particular areas. Takes pro rates, revenues like pilot across all of them. And basically says this is the net that somebody pays, the average tax person pays for each service. So this is how much someone is paying. So they're paying, you know, like $768 for police, $134 for fire, et cetera. So you just take a look at how that break tax bill breaks down. And for the city only, including the ballot items, this would be a net tax bill increase of $166 for a $370,000 home. So if your value is higher, you're going to be paying more. If it's lower, you're going to be paying less. Taking a look at this, this is, we had a couple of requests to make sure we're really clear about what each item was going to cost. So it's, this is kind of hard to see, but we also have this on the website. So people can go in and enter their own property value and you can see exactly what each item on the ballot will cost. So there's the municipal budget, there's the library item, the mosaic item, the community fund, central home, house and office. And then the school rate. And again, you know, school rates are guessed, but as of today, they're still predicting the minus three. That's what they're showing at their budget meeting tonight. So, you know, we don't know any different. We understand that that could change, but that's the best information we have. So this is a tool, again, this is based on 370,000, but it is there for people to see. And someone can take a look and put in their own value and see what each item will cost them. So you can see the change from not only their totals, but the change from each year. And again, for for downtown properties, this is the non homestead, if you have a commercial property. So that that school rate is different basically and includes the downtown improvement district tax. And you'll see there's a section that says, if located in the downtown improvement district, enter commercial use percentage. And the reason for that is only the commercial portions of downtown buildings are included in the DID. So if you have residential up upper floors and commercial lower floors, only the lower floor is what's considered. The upper floors are not. And so we so we have gone through and factored out any residential. So some places might have 50% of your building, some might be 33%, some of it might be 100%. So if you're interested in what this means and what the downtown improvement district tax would mean, you can enter your total building value and then how much of it is in the DID. And that's information that you should have or certainly we would have in our assessing office. So this is again of your, the ability for people to take a look at the tax impact. So just taking a look at the things that we've got going this year that are funded in this budget and we're trying to do, we've got our FEMA projects. We do have 2.26 million in capital and equipment plan. That is an increase. We've included an increase paving. We've increased our paving by $66,000. We have 700,000 of waterline improvements scheduled. And we have other plans for major projects that we discussed. Creating more housing, we're continuing, we've kept our planning and development staff to move things forward. We don't have any possible development agreements on the ballot, but still would be considered use potentially using those if needed. We did not fund Housing Trust Fund or Direct CCR funding if we had a need. Councilmember Alfonso and I were talking about this prior to the meeting, but if we had a need for for funding, we could access that from the reserve fund if we need, if we had something that we absolutely had to fund. In our rebuild and resiliency goal, we've moving forward our wastewater project, as you know, and our CSO projects. We do not have funding for MEAC or My Ride of the Conservation Commission, Tree Board, AmeriCorps and NYC at the parks and EV Cruiser. So I made a lot of reductions there. In our advanced economy, we have funded Montpelier Alive through the DID increase. We do not have funds for the homelessness task force, although we do have $50,000 for outreach. We've moved the community fund to the ballot. We've not funded Economic Development Arts Fund or the Social Equity, Social Equity and Justice Committee. And finally, improve health and health and safety. We've kept the CIT effort. We have not funded the 17th officer. We have continued to fund the department at its current staffing level. We have added 50,000 in mental health outreach. If for some reason that doesn't work, that funding could be used to fund a 17th officer partway through the year. So there there is some flexibility there. We eliminated the social worker in part because the state is eliminating that program. So we were paying our share along with Berry, along with the state, and that program has been cut. We have reduced one position in the senior center. We've reduced one position in recreation after reducing the position in recreation last year. And we are, that means we will be consolidating with parks. So that will have an impact on them. You heard all about those last week. Under our our goal or our desire to provide responsible and economic and engaged government, we continue communications, but splitting those duties with that reduced MSAC position, senior center position, excuse me, and the manager's office. Our human resources function will continue, but also we split with the city manager's office. We're continuing outside lobbying for 5,000. So essentially, between all of these, including finance, we're combining, you know, 5.8 FTE into three FTE. You know, basically saving $137,000. And we will see how that that works. And then we've eliminated some software which has been helpful to us. And we are actually still trying to figure out if there's a way we can keep those somehow, but we have not built those into the budget. So the positives is we've got a, we've got a tax rate increase of only 3.52% for city operations and 4.77 cents overall. With including valid items, and that's per the council's direction. It fully funds police fire DPW at FY25 levels. It adds the mental health support funding, adds funding to the capital plan, addresses our priorities for house services and creating housing, although certainly not as much as I think we would like. And it keeps our basic services for residents. Again, we can't say that we're going to be able to do everything the way we've done them. But the senior center will still be open. We will still have rec programs. We'll still have parks. We will still have all the the public safety and and DPW services and those kind of things that we we do for people. Negatives, of course, is, as I just said, all the, all of our services will be very thin and we will need to revise expectations. DPW is still down a position cut last year. Police is still down the position cut last year. We are going to have a lot of admin consolidations that will definitely have an impact on our work. The cuts from FY25, the long list of items that I didn't show this week are now basically built in. It's the second year we've not funded them. So things like the home housing test, housing trust fund, economic development arts fund, all those kind of things, you know, they will probably have to be built back up in the budget over time in the future, but for now, they're gone. Through our software, we will have less public transparency and six people are losing jobs. So those are, those are the negatives. Longer term strategies, clearly health insurance is a big one and there there really aren't a lot of great choices. But we are certainly digging hard to see where we can figure those out. We will have to look at additional departmental consolidations. You know, we have gone back through prior recommendations and really the only additional one that we haven't actively considered that was recommended was, you know, maybe pulling the cemetery in to consolidate with city operations, but there are separate operations, so they'd they'd have to be willing to do that. So that may or may not be able to happen. And then certainly a review of fees and rates. We talked a little about that last week. The the plus side is it could bring in more revenue. The downside is it can, you know, maybe our fees then don't become affordable and they become discouraging for people to. So we need to keep looking at that. So that's the the budget summary. Obviously happy to take any questions. We've walked through, you know, we started this with preliminary discussions in November, initial presentation in December, budget meetings, December 18. Last couple of weeks in January, and now this is the, the night that you all have to decide what goes on the ballot. And after tonight, um, will be the voting March four is the town meeting day voting, although I'm sure the city clerk will tell us it will start earlier than that. So that's all I have to say on the budget.
All right.
For now, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Bill. Well, open it up to questions and comments from the public. This is, uh, your public hearing. Anybody in the room would like to be heard?
Yes, sir.
Why just step up? Because you need to, you need to be heard.
Thank you, uh, Joe Blatchford. Uh, I take you up ongoing, uh, negotiations with the unions for new contracts. How would that affect the budget? Assuming that they get settled, you know, within the next year.
Yeah, thanks, Judge. Good question. We have, we have four contracts that will be open. Um, they all expired June thirty. We've included in the budget, you know, some allowance for settlements with them. Uh, so we've made some assumptions that we would reach agreements with them. We've, we've at this point got the health insurance in at what we know. Uh, so if we can get any savings, uh, we would say, you know, we, we've typically been able to keep our negotiations within our budget or, you know, and if there's a vast difference, we would have to bring that to the council and make a decision about where to cut somewhere else to make that happen.
So what you're saying is that the, the budget is solid regardless of the negotiations?
Right. We wouldn't, we wouldn't, we, once the voters vote the budget, that's the budget for this year. So if we, if we, but you know, say we signed a contract that costs a lot more money, we'd have to find it somewhere within the budget. We wouldn't be able, we can't come back and change the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Yeah, Peter Kelman.
All right. Well, without repeating what I said earlier, I think that, uh, you really should put a local option tax on the ballot. And I'd like to hear about what that might, what, what additional revenue that might, uh, provide and, and look at the budget with that in place. Uh, also, um, I've suggested that the city council instruct the city manager to pursue other revenue generating possibilities. Uh, he mentioned a few, but I've mentioned a bunch of others in my, uh, in emails to you. And I'm sure other people have other ideas as well. I don't think that, that the ones that the, uh, city manager, uh, proposed are all there, all that are possible. I think the city council should also instruct the city manager to pursue other cost saving possibilities. Again, uh, you know, cutting positions, uh, is not the only way to save money. Uh, I think last week, um, Alex Keller suggested there are, uh, ways to achieve efficiencies, um, that, that don't necessarily mean cutting positions, or they might as well, but I, 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 I think the, these, these, these position cuts that were done in, in response to, uh, Tim Heaney's, uh, request for a certain amount to be cut to go back to the, uh, uh, rate of inflation, uh, struck me as kind of arbitrary. And then having Bill march out, um, all the best possible people and all the great work that they were doing, um, you know, made it seem like, you know, oh, well, everybody's doing, you know, absolutely the best that they can. Um, well, that may or may not be true. We need to have a closer look at how some of this money is being spent. Now, I'm just going to say one more thing, which is that there's gotta be a way to explain the budget to voters, to property tax, uh, to, 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 to property owners that we can really understand. I have a PhD, Bill. I cannot follow your presentations. I just cannot. And I can't imagine that most people do. And saying that it's on the website is really saying like it's in hell because finding things on the website is very difficult. And then when you find it, where do you find the thing that you really want to know? You say, oh, you can just put in your own property amount. Oh, that sounds very simple, but is it really simple? I hear a lot of complaints from some of the usual squeaky wheels, including me, um, uh, about taxes and, and the impact on people and so forth. How many people are really impacted and by how much? There needs to be a way for people to really understand that and not just get panicked and make cuts. I think in some ways this has more to do with two things. One is a lack of confidence in city government. And that manifests itself in complaining about the things that it is easiest to complain about, potholes and budgets, right?
Peter, you didn't, you didn't hear the beeper, but, but okay, time just
All right. My, my last thing, which is very quick. I think people are hurting in general in this country, not specifically because of the taxes in Montpelier.
Thank you. Come on up, Katie.
Hello, everybody. Um, I am here representing Montpelier Alive.
Could you tell us who you are?
I'm Katie Troutz, the executive director of Montpelier Alive. Sorry. Um, and I'm here also representing the business community. Um, I've been able to discuss, uh, the budget with the business community as well as my board of directors. Um, and I wanted to express some concerns that I've made council members aware of around um, our city allocation being housed in the D I D entirely. Uh, my first reaction to this was, wow, that's some creative thinking and gratitude for keeping our budget line intact in some way. But then when I brought it to the board and the business community, it became clear how this likely will play out. Um, it sounds like with our thirty nine thousand being housed in the D I D, that would increase the tax to commercial property owners in the designated downtown. And from what I hear, often business owners, tenants share that tax burden or share expense burden with property owners. So their rents are likely to go up. And we all know what has happened to our businesses in our downtown in the past couple of years. And we all know that economically they are struggling. And what I think this will result in, especially for those who are really teetering on the edge of closure, is more vacancies. And that is not the direction that our downtown wants to go in. Um, they're already on the edge. If you talk to any of them, they will tell you that. Um, especially restaurants, especially restaurants are struggling. So, uh, we have business owners on our board and, um, and they became quite concerned about this. Um, I know that it's, it's difficult to come up with other options. Uh, but there are other reasons too, why I just want to put it out there that this particular option of moving our entire allocation, which is around thirty nine thousand dollars, um, into the D I D could be troublesome is also, we have a very close partnership with the city. And we are essentially considered the marketing branch for the city for Montpelier. Our marketing is a lot of, um, what visitors and tourists see who are attracted to downtown. We are the central place where people go to to find information. And we do, and we do a lot for the downtown in recovery, economic recovery. And having that allocation as a part of the city budget is also a symbol of that partnership. We don't want the entire burden of our budget line to be on the shoulders of businesses and property owners. I think that it's really meaningful to have that thirty nine thousand dollars. Not a huge amount. I know that it adds up. Um, but being a part of, um, the city's budget is meaningful in that way as well, symbolizing partnership. Thank you.
Nathan.
I don't want to break this. Um, my name is Nathan Suter. I'm resident of Montpelier. Uh, and I want to thank you all for your service. Uh, I don't know if you hear that enough. I know that you do a lot of work and you spend a lot of hours. Um, so I appreciate it. Um, I think when I looked over the budget line by line, and when I listened to last week's meeting, uh, I was struck by one thing, which is that we're facing the larger context of an increased cost of living across the board. This is not just Montpelier, it's not just Vermont, it's across the nation. Uh, I think that squeezing our hardworking city staff who are, who make this community what it is in many ways is not the right place to apply pressure. Um, I know the bureaucracy isn't sexy, but it sure can get things done. And I appreciate the city staff who are here, who spoke last week so eloquently about the work that they do and how they're struggling to imagine a future with less of them. Um, I think we all care about efficiency. Uh, struck by thinking that one of the things that's most costly is turnover from burnout, from feeling from understaffing and feeling low confidence that the city council has your back. And so I want our city staff to persist. I want them to gain the experience so that in their third year, in their fourth year, they're more efficient and we get more for our dollar. And that they have the confidence that we as a community and that the city council has their back. You know, if there are too many committees, as Tim Heaney mentioned, uh, I think the city council can manage this challenge through city council and the city manager. The infrastructure work will not get cheaper as we have seen every year, things get more expensive. So let's not kick that can down the street and make it more expensive in the future. Um, I don't want to pretend that we can have a thriving city on the cheap. Let's avoid the death spiral of austerity. Instead, let's meet the needs of the people in the city. If that expense is significant, then we'll bear it for now. One outcome of that, of this is that some folks may move elsewhere and rents may increase. Tina, sorry, Tina and I may have to move somewhere else. That's of course not what we want. Uh, instead, let's invest in our infrastructure and in housing. Let's increase the tax base and share the bounty of the, of a thriving city with more people. Uh, I want to consider the shadow constituency who are not present tonight. Who are they? They're the many people who dearly wish to live, raise a family and, and retire in this great city and would willingly share the costs with us. Uh, if we build, if we have two thou, two thousand buil, buildings in our city, if we increase that by ten percent, that's two hundred more at an average of seven thousand dollars a year of property tax, a little bit low. That's a one point four million dollars in the tax base. Let's increase our tax base. Let's say yes to housing. Let's say yes to infrastructure to support housing and let's say yes in my backyard. Please be visionary. Please get back to the December budget, uh, which represented, as I understand it, a six point nine four percent increase and invest in our future. Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan. Anybody else in the room who has not been heard? Steve.
Well, Steve, I am going to repeat some things I've said before because I think you haven't listened and you haven't heard them. I agree, it's a gimmick to move my imperialized budget out to the D I D. And I hadn't really realized that would just frequently get passed on and increase rents from folks. I've made suggestions that we give, uh, tax holidays to the landlords of the businesses. If, if they could verify that they were passing it through to the tenants, their, their commercial tenants, especially the restaurants. What you've done is you've protected staff, staff with healthcare increases and what cost of living increases, whatever. And you cut from the most vulnerable, you cut the, the social worker, you cut the homelessness money, you cut, you still haven't done bathrooms, you're leaving people outside, you're not even bothering to leave the front of city hall open when people stand out in zero degree weather for two hours, waiting for the bus to take them to the shelter. It, it, it's really immoral. It, it's gross. Um, you, you need to put money in for Country Club Road due diligence. I don't know how much reserve. I just heard Bill mention there's reserves in case something comes up. But the housing needs assessment, the geotechnical for how much can the soils and the bedrock, how much blasting is going to be needed to put water and sewer up there? How can the, that land even support multi-story buildings? And you need to take a position on prime ag, whether we're going to build on prime ag or whether we're going to protect it because that's going to define the site design. You need money for a master plan. We may well not get the T I F or the growth center if you don't get serious about completing that work and your staff is not on course to win either the growth center or the T I F. And I'm going to be, uh, working to make sure we don't cut any corners on that. And I was successful last time. I've asked repeatedly how much the parking fund is bringing in versus how much it's costing, you know, it and I, I didn't get an answer. That should, that should pique y'all's interest. You know, if we're just paying three people to run around and collect less than their, but I also want to point out that our building inspector jumped to the sustainability coordinator, a twenty five thousand dollar increase in the cost in this year's budget with the primary mission to make the, make up the two hundred thousand shortfall in the district heat. He has done none of that and he still got the twenty five thousand dollar increase. So either you take the twenty five thousand back away and pay him as a building inspector. You know, it, it's just unconscionable how reckless y'all are with our money, you know? Net zero does, we have not abandoned net zero by getting rid of that position. We, we can continue on our net zero goal. That's a fallacy that we're giving up our net zero direction. I'll remind you that there was four hundred thousand in ARPA money set aside for homelessness. She robbed it and did it for other stuff. You know, you, you basically distributed it to backfill.
Thanks, Steve.
You gave forty five thousand a good Sam and then you're not even auditing whether they're delivering what they agreed to. So you, you're, you're really reckless.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else in the room? Oh, sir.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify something Bill said about that spreadsheet, um, being available online. I may have overcommitted. Um, so it today is not online, um, but by the end of the week, there will be a working copy online. I will have Evelyn uh, banner that on the website so that people know how to access it. And I will provide, um, an instruction, uh, how to. So it is very simple. Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else in the room would like to be heard on the, uh, as part of the public hearing? And is there anyone on, uh, on Zoom? I'm not seeing any hands raised, but it's not always the easiest thing in the world to see people's hands. All right. At this point, we will close the public hearing and move on to, uh, council deliberation. Folks, where are we? We, uh, we passed the budget, uh, last week. Not that universally, uh, not, not everybody was happy with it, um, for various reasons. We have the opportunity now to either, uh, move it to, uh, to the ballot as is, or, or make changes. Eric.
Yeah, I, um, I would love to, to have the chance to actually vote on the original budget proposal that was presented in December. We never did actually vote on that. So I would like, I'm going to move that we approve that version of the budget.
Is there discussion? I'll say, I think that, uh, the budget as proposed to the, by the city manager at the, uh, at the December level is something that I believe to be a reasonable level of, uh, of expenditure. It, it meets, uh, some very serious, uh, needs for, uh, public services and it also Needs for, uh, public services and it also, uh, makes cuts that, uh. People are still going to notice, are still going to feel cuts in services, but it preserves the most important things. And so I. From from my perspective, I I su- support with, uh, what you're doing.
I think I remember you were also willing to approve the 24% option, so I'm not surprised you liked it.
Uh, no, I never was.
No, you some positive presentation, but, um. It feels like we've had a lot of conversation. We've worked our way through a lot of pieces. Um, it's been a year we've worked through. 69 tax appeals.
A large number, I don't know.
Something similar to that and baitment hearings and it's been heart wrenching listening to folks. Who are having trouble paying their taxes and what clear, um. You know, I do think we need to be positive and look forward, but we also have to be conscious about our whole community. I'm I'm not. Super comfortable with where we ended up at the end of our last meeting at four point. Seven one.
Four point seven seven.
Seven seven. But I think that's more the direction we need to be in than. The December piece, which is feels like forever ago.
And and Bill or or Sarah, uh, the figure we have. Today is at at the current, uh, budget level is. 166 dollar increase per year for the average residential property owner. Am I am I right that the the December, uh, budget would would be right around 200? Thank you. For those who didn't pick that up, the answer is yes, uh. Going back to the December budget would be $200 for for the average $370,000 residential, uh, property. Lauren.
Yeah, I am going to support this motion. I think, you know, when we came into the budgeting process and having done it for a number of years, you know, we saw. We've intense pressures on our budget, you know, coming out of COVID and then hit by the flood. So we have so many needs. And to come in with essentially an arbitrary number, three and a half percent that a couple of counselors. Uh, presented as as a goal. To me, it's not really responsive to the pressures on the healthcare costs, the, um. Cost increases to construction. So the thing three and a half percent is inflation. That's not real for what we're seeing for just us being able to maintain our services. So to just pick a number as opposed to looking at what are the implications for our community of cutting services. Cutting staff, which means cutting services and doing it in a way, um, if we cut further, that really doesn't have a plan. It just says, all right, city staff. Do more with less somehow, but we're not going to get any hard decisions about not. Not doing certain things. We want to keep doing everything. We just want to do it left well across the board, which is what I think that budget is going to do. So. I think what we originally asked the city staff to do, look at, take a really hard look, come back, making back with staff cuts. With cuts to every program, Bill went through it. So this is this is not already budget that we're voting on right now, just to be clear. This is a, this is a massive. Hit to what we've been able to offer to residents. So this is already cutting services, cutting our ability to deliver them. And it's it's unfortunate that costs have just spiraled so out of control with these things outside of our. Healthcare and other things that are just, we can't control them and yet we need to deliver these services. We're seeing increased demand for police. We're seeing a huge need for fire. We need, you know, we have this infrastructure backlog that we can't ignore. Uh, as one commenter said, if we kick the can down the road, it's just getting more and more expensive. And so I think there's. You know, a a point where us not investing now is going to cost our community more in two years, in three years, in five years, 10 years. And so I just think we can't be short sighted and we do need to look at structural. Changes over the long term. Um, I just don't think this budget of cutting work is actually doing that in thoughtful way. Um, I also think we need to be having enough resources that we can be looking at housing to bring in more people. Through the grand list, more community members that can help spread out the costs, but that's where we have to go. And by disturbing our staff, it's going to be harder to actually support the community in doing that. But that's why I'm supporting this project.
Sorry. Any other discussion? So.
I I'm not, I wouldn't support, um, the December budget. It's just too large an increase for, uh, certainly for my. Many of my constituents, the majority, I would say, at least certainly the majority I've heard from. Um, I don't think it's sustainable in the long run either. I mean, if you can describe it as an austerity budget, but. Um, by saying that. You're you're really saying that you would you'd go to an 8% increase or a 10% increase, which I think is. It's just completely unsustainable. Um. I I think I know we've come out of a very, a very tough time, but I think we need to recognize that. We cannot provide all all the services at the level we provide them, not forever, but at the moment. While we while we recover. I don't, I've I've, I don't like the idea of moving the the, uh. The monpelear life onto DID. I think it. It does, it does send the wrong message to the businesses. Um. I think it's. It puts all of the burden on on the business community, which is a much smaller community. Uh, whereas it it seems to me, uh, the town supports the business community and it's one way for them to do it, but I would, I would want to trade that for something. I think that should go probably go back in. I also don't think, uh, I I agree that the, um. The sustainability facilities, uh, position, the cut of that position does not represent. Um, the end of net zero. It's a suspension, certainly. Um, it's going to affect it, yes. But it doesn't, it doesn't by any means mean the end of it. I think, however, that. The position as it. Was described last meeting is really, um. It's really kind of a sort of a DPW position. I mean, there's, there are a lot of facilities. That need to be managed. And I think. I don't know why we we pay a position at the at the salary we pay it. But I think we do need somebody in that position because I'd rather not see those. Responsibilities passed to the heads of departments who really have zero expertise. In facilities. Uh, we certainly need some expertise in energy and facilities in that position. I don't know whether we. We need a full-time position there, but, um. I think I I I have a new perspective on that position after hearing what the responsible were. Last meeting. So I would, I would want to work with those two, those two numbers. Helen, I'm sorry.
Um, I also not support going up to, uh, December, but the proposal. I wish we don't have to cut any positions. And I, uh, mentioned this when you started calling me about the budget. That's not the answer. Like cutting, cutting, cutting. It's it is not the right answer because in the end we will not find a way to cut. So we need to restructure, uh, what we are doing. That's why I asked, is there anything? You know, in discussion among municipal governments. That they can do. The same thing, same services, but in a different way. Either it's kind of well, they're going around this question, but it is important. And since I was at the point in, in 2021. I meet with the street two residents every month. When I got elected, I continued and so got elected and we now two of us. Um, organize this meetings and over for two years, like. They have been saying the same thing. Please. Um, you through the budget for core services, public safety. Public, um, work. And also filing, right? And please don't, don't make a tax increase. So for over two years, I have been hearing the same thing every month. So I wish I live in a monpelear, like we can say, yes, to every single tax increase and. We can, we don't have to sacrifice any of the services our municipal government offers. But we don't have that actually. And I live in a monpelear, but most of us, I cannot take tax increases. An median salary here in monpelear is 58,000. And women are doing 50, uh, sorry, 47,000 median salary for women. And median salary for men is 58,000. So how they will pay all this increase, like. I wish here we can have everything to the budget. Like this is my third budget and I say the same thing, but then. I look at the numbers, I talk to people, we cannot continue doing that. So again, I wish I lived in a monpelear, like the people. I hear some of them come here and they say, yeah, let's tell our friends in peace. It's better for our community. I know. We need to do lots of things. I know staff, the council. We are all on the same boat. We want to do the same thing. And sometimes I feel like. Like city council versus staff, which is not true. Because every decision we make, we know that it will impact everyone's life life. But tha- that's maybe the most difficult, uh. Thing we do as a city council, like serving our public to decide the budgets. And like try to find the sacrifices and like opportunities so we can really serve. What they need. And I know that change comes with fear. I really understand that. Because when I moved here in 2017 from Turkey. I I felt that that fear. And let me talk about change, all this cuts. All the discussions, I know, I know, and I feel that fear, but sometimes change makes. People change, uh, change makes communities more is doing it. I think this budget will make. Our community more is brilliant, but again, it's not the end of the discussion. After the elections, after the ballot, we have to sit down and we have to start a discussion and talk everything we just. Uh, go to our meetings in a more detailed way. So. To sum up, I think we should go with the seven, uh, point, uh, sorry, four point seven seven.
Adrian.
It was my first year on city council, my first budget for the city and. I will say what I know now, what I knew when I started, I would have probably done things really different. Um, I would have. Done a lot more research. Um, I would have probably talked about the strategic plan in a totally different way. Um, because I feel like the strategic plan, as we did approve it, really should be forming our budget. And the strategic plan should be attached to our budget. So when we get to the decisions. We already know, like it's part of the process. Um, and it really can be done that way. So I'm hoping after this budget season and as I move into my year two, we have a post. You know, boredom of how can we do this better, um, you know, in the in the world of continuous improvement, because. I feel like I, this is a struggle for me to make an informed decision in terms of. Um, you know, taking the the human piece out of this and looking at this from like a business perspective and. And being responsible to our taxpayers. I will say, when I go out to dinner, when I go to Shaw's, when I go to dinner parties. A hundred percent of the conversations are, we pay too much in taxes. I mean, I'm trying to enjoy myself and it's exhausting. I will tell you that it's exhausting. And, you know, last year's tax increase, the year before, you know, I've spent. Hundreds of hours of my time doing research on cities in Vermont, New Hampshire, Maine, trying to. Compare apples to oranges of our city and how we, you know, stand against other cities in terms of staff, department. Um, you know, our taxes, it's, as Bill mentioned, it's really, really, really hard to do that, but I went down very deep. Heavenfold to try to make an informed, educated decision when I vote for the budget. And, you know, the 4.7%, I think is is reasonable. If nothing is going to be perfect, people are going to be mad. They're going to be upset. Some people are going to go and celebrate. They're going to be happy. I don't, there's things that I would definitely do differently, but I'm not going to. I just, I'm not going to go and renegotiate the entire budget last minute, but I've learned so much through this process. That next year I will definitely bring up, um, you know, just. Different ways of looking at this. We can be creative. We can look at revenue streams. We can bring in more money. Um, but I think. You know, we've been very lucky to have a very robust staff for the past couple of years, which is great. But when you look at other cities, we have way more staff than other cities our size. And I feel that we can still provide the services, we could provide, um. You know, our safety, our public works, um, our administrative staff going through, um, you know, all the. The the services that we provided, we can still do that, but it's going to take leadership. To really set the stage and be positive to ensure that happens. If we're saying that we're not going to do this, we're going to lose services, everything's going to go to crap. Then that's the way it is. More rattle drops, people get upset, they leave, um, like, like, like you said. The cost of turnover is astronomical. We do not want there to be turnover. So how do we keep this? Solutions oriented in a positive way, keep morale up, knowing that we just don't have the money. We don't have the money. It's like my checkbook. Money's coming into my checkbook and we're in the red. So, I mean, we have to make cuts and. I think it's not just this year, it's the year before, it's the year before that, it's the year before that. Now is the time to think about how do we restructure our organization. How, what services do we, can we actually provide for our government? We know that we can't provide everything. We are not going. To be able to be everything for everyone. It is a fact. Like, we're just not going to be able to do that. And I think that comes in leadership, change management, really a positive way of sending this message and being creative and how we. Reorganize our our city government and provide our service. I think we're doing a disservice by keeping our tax rate high and. Um, I think we can, we can get moving forward with the 4.7% back to me. We still have to.
Well, okay, I think we're ready to vote. I I just want to say that I think that, uh. We. As I said last week, we hear a lot about some people saying, well, we need to restructure. Uh, what we're doing, but but we're cutting without ma- without making a plan. We're cutting without, uh, without an idea for, uh. For how we're going to provide services. This is, I hear people talk about. We need to have only needs. And not wants. And there's no wants in this budget. It's all needs. And I I think that, uh. We're. Doing a disservice to, uh, to our community by, uh. By cutting what, uh, what we're cutting. I'll, I'll do this, uh. By roll call, um, Palin. So the, so the vote vote is, uh, the motion to adopt the. Budget presented to us in December.
No.
Lauren.
Yeah.
Tim.
No.
Sal.
No.
Carrie.
Yes.
Adrian.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion fails. We need to have a, we need to have a budget.
So. So the motion at the last meeting that was voted. That still stands, right? So we don't need a new motion to replace that, or do?
We do, we need to.
We do.
Well, I think we do. I think we need to have.
The second hearing on.
Right. I mean, you could vote the same budget. As soon or later you can vote what the number that goes on the ballot, so.
Right.
I mean, I, we never had, I mean, I guess you could. I don't know. If there's a motion that stands and doesn't get replaced, I don't know why that wouldn't be a budget. We've never had that. We've always voted. Yeah, we've always voted again, I'm not sure. Yeah, we've always voted again, I'm not sure. But you could move it if you want, if that's you want it to be. That's that's what I think is the cleanest way to do it.
First is a discussion. I'll make a motion that we affirm. The motion we made at our last meeting. Who approves the budget, um, that would result with a four point seven seven percent increase?
Is there a second?
Uh, can I, can I ask for the motion to be split with the?
Yes. Yeah.
We're splitting the city clerks.
Same mistake I made last.
Is there a second?
We 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 passed the four seven seven.
Right.
No one object for.
Well, technically, did we, was the motion? To adopt it or was it to move it on to the next public here?
I said you affirm, but move it on would be fine.
What did we vote on last time?
Okay. Hoping the clerk will jump in here.
We certainly used the words move it on, but it was, it was a vote so that we had a budget. Coming into this meeting. So my understanding was. What we voted last time was the budget. That we brought to this meeting.
I think that's correct. Uh give me a moment to look that up. I don't think there was any, um. So I think it was separate from moving it along, but give me just a second. I have to find this. Just gonna pull it up online here. Uh, the inappropriate notes are online. I don't know why they were put into your packet. I apologize. Um, I will adjust those and we can reapprove them next time. I don't know what they're doing here. And John, while you're thinking, let me say that one of the reasons that I think. It makes sense to move. The budget again tonight is so that it can be open to. Amendments again, if anyone wants to move amendments, will you move to amend the motion? The the motion was to move all portions of the budget as proposed. And this would have been referring to the three point seven seven, uh except for the city clerks portion, and that was amended. Uh, to in, to return the, um. Uh, the sustainability director. So the motion was not contingent on, it did, it wasn't just a move forward. Uh, there was a separate motion to hold a second hearing on the draft warning. That was moved by Sal and seconded by Palin. So those were separate motions. So in my opinion, the original motion, uh that. That was passed, that is the current budget as it appears on the warning.
Okay.
But that's my opinion.
Lauren has spoken.
Lauren.
Heard the question, I'm gonna keep the proper motion. Just. Digging into the Montpelier life request a little more, um. So the way being in the downtown agreement district line, I mean, it's not showing up in the four point seven seven percent. So we moved it and we're. Increasing the tax rate. So, um.
It was five point oh nine if you move the thirty nine.
Can I just add really quickly though, just as an as an amendment, the 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 proposed warning. Does include that budget. So if you appro- approve the proposed warning, that will be technically a second approval of that four point seven seven.
True. He's right, that. That once you approve the ballot, that's your approval of that dollar amount.
Okay. So Lauren, that was, you were in the middle of.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I. Here ain't what, like Katie and obviously Montpelier, Montpelier Alive has been such a. Critical partner and brings such values to the city, so. It's hard to. Add anything back in at this point, um. With the difference of increase the D I B a little bit, but put some of it onto. Everyone, because we all benefit from it, um. I mean, the the other piece I'm thinking about is the seventeenth police officer and the fact that our. Our strategic plan from the beginning, it was public safety, public works, infrastructure, the core services, uh our police chief that told us. That getting to seventeen officers is where we need to go. That is funding that department fully funding it if we really wanted to. Um, you know, we then potentially. Make half the salary and starting at give time to the height of sixteen. And then, you know, so we can, we aim into hiring in January or something, like putting some money back in, so we're moving towards the seventeenth officer. Um, I think, you know, what what we heard about. The increasing needs on police department. You know, it's a huge increase in call and demand of those services. And asking, you know, fewer fleets than. You know, what we really should be at to continue to do that. And just the message it's sending to. Have people know that there's no, there's no play coming, there's no help coming, um, in the future, so. On the number in front of me of what, like. The January start to the hopefully visiting with me, but, um, or, you know, I mean, I can move that, add that position back, but. That's I am concerned that, you know, we have some poor value.
Thanks, Lauren. Sal.
So I I agree, I'm I'm concerned about the the police position as well. However, um. My understanding is that we haven't filled the sixteenth position. And that we're. Will uh likely not not really be able to fill the seventeenth position. Uh, so rather than put an amount in the tax. Bill that we won't use. I I I would, I would like to communicate my intent, which would be to fill that position if 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 a candidate becomes available. Um, and to use a reserve fund or wherever it is and figure it out next time. But I don't see any reason to tax. Tax people for a position that we're unlikely to fill by. By everything that I have heard presented. But I would definitely fill it if the opportunity arose in in coming year.
John, you've been, you've had your hand up patiently for a while. Um, yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, I hate being away, um, I've got a, uh. A family member who needs support, which is why I'm at home, but I did not hear that there was any second to Tim's motion. There was a question by Sal that started discussion. And it would be in order to either have a second or to have the motion die for lack of a second before further discussion. Thank you. There we are. The motion's withdrawn, so there's no motion uh before the count, pending before the council. I agree. Go ahead.
I just have the notes from last time and says, we need the seventeenth officer to shed gain, but retain fifty thousand dollars. If that's not successful.
Yeah. Seventeen, but yeah. That's what I was gonna say, that same thing. I also just to, um. The questions about my fellow alive, I'd sent out some information and just those that don't have it, to to put the thirty nine thousand in the budget, thirty nine one. Would increase the overall rate from four point seven seven cents to five percent, excuse me, to five point oh nine percent. Uh, another option would be to just leave it the way we have it. I suggested putting on the ballot. I mean. It still ends up with the same tax rate at five point oh nine percent. Another option would be to eliminate the D I D rate, which would reduce the taxes on those buildings. And theoretically on the the business leases, but then you'd have to put all of that, the hundred and one thousand into the tax rate. Which would then be, um, raise the overall rate from four point seven seven to five point five nine percent. And another option would be to reduce or eliminate the D I D rate and implement the local sales tax. Dedicate the percentage of the sales tax to Montpelier Alive, so if they have a dedicated funding stream. Um, projected revenue of about six hundred thousand, it would take sixteen point seven percent. To raise a hundred and one thousand or six point seven cents to raise forty thousand, depending which one. And then the remainder would be available for general city use. So those are. At the quick, we got, I got asked to come up with options. Those were the ones I could come up with on the spot.
Palin.
Local auction tax, I thought that I'm open to discussing that, but without any data. I, I think businesses don't want to pay. E M B, right? Then they will pay for local auction tanks. Because they have to, no, they they have to raise their prices. To make the. Yeah, okay, so. How many people are we expecting to visit? Do we have any data? Because we hear that or in the written, uh, again, I'm trying to ask this question to understand. Uh, six hundred thousand dollars revenue we are expecting from this local, um. Option tax. So. How many? People, what is the data, right? Is there like, oh, each year we have this many young people coming out, visiting town, because if you don't. Attract. That specific number of people to make that revenue, which means that as residents, we will pay. That tax. So because our, our. Main goal is to tax people who visit our town, so we will help our community, our businesses. And so what is the data? Uh, coming to justify that six hundred thousand. Uh, revenue, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if the businesses or Montpelier Alive has data about how many residents versus non-residents shop, um. Probably businesses track that. We get the data from the total sales that comes from the Vermont Tax Department, which just tells us how many. Retail sales occurred in Montpelier and that year was based on. Year ending June thirty twenty four, which which was the flood year, so presumably that, you know, hopefully. That would be low because a lot of businesses were closed for several months. Uh, but that's where, that's where the dollar number comes from. I don't have. You know, I think we. It was F, well, year ending June thirty twenty four, so July one twenty three to June thirty twenty four, so the flood was July ten twenty three. So July, August, September into October, at least many businesses were closed, um. So that's, and then that's taking out the thirty percent that the state takes, so that's the net that we would receive uh after that. Um, but that, you know, I I can't tell you, I don't have data. I don't know if you guys have data about the visitors.
Go ahead.
Because I know that I will be asked this question, right? You are talking about this, but. How, do you know how many people are coming? So and. Another question, will residents will be okay with this tax? Because last time. They are not willing, you know, they are not really interested in this option because of the COVID. And now we have COVID plus two floods. So. Yeah, let's discuss it, but I don't know, since we have such a limited time for the ballot items, I don't know if it is the right night. To discuss. The local auction tax.
Adrian, go ahead.
So I'm not an expert at all at local option tax, but just a quick research. Um, as of January twenty twenty five, there are twenty seven municipalities in Vermont that have adopted the one percent local sale tax. I am not gonna read them all, but Berry City, Furland are right around us. Um, so what are Berry, so there are towns that are, you know, surrounding us that have adopted this, so. Um, you know, I'm. I'm not gonna not come. I'm not gonna, what am I not gonna do? So if it's. If Berry, Berry City has a one percent opt, one percent deal tax, I'm not gonna not go there because they have a one percent local option back, right? I'm not gonna drive to Montpelier because they don't have a one percent local option back, but that seems really silly to me. But I would love to understand, I think there was, I did research and my computer's not working, so I can't pull it up. But there is data out there that shows how much these cities have brought in, um. From this one percent local option tax, and it's pretty significant. And I don't know what the. I mean. It's not gonna change behavior, that's my assumption, but I'd love to have research on that. And, you know, I am definitely interested in pursuing that because. You know, our neighbors have done it, they've brought in money, it hasn't really changed anybody's behavior in terms of purchasing and buying towers. But I think. You know, we have time to do research, we tend to contact these cities and learn from, you know, what worked, what hasn't worked, what would they do differently. Um, but I think if we were to make a decision, it would have to be done tonight, can you put on the ballot? And there's still a lot of new educational outreach and support, but that's. Can I, can I speak to that?
Let let me, let me say one thing. One thing that's important to, for all of us to keep in mind is that. Isn't, there are a couple of things that are important to keep in mind. One is that. I I strongly support our local businesses, uh, community thrives on our local businesses. We also know that. Every time we've had a townwide reappraisal in the city. It has shifted tax burden from business properties onto residential properties. And that happened this past year and it happened, happens every time. Um, but two, businesses do not pay sales taxes. In fact, the business, uh, by state law, businesses are not even allowed to just. Uh. Fold it into the price and imply to uh the customer that, uh. It's covered. The businesses are are required to show that separately because it's the purchaser, the customer who's paying the sales tax. And. Cut, businesses may not like the inconvenience of, uh. Of computing it, but there's already a sales tax, so all they're doing is changing their, uh. Their programming, so it's, uh, it's one percent higher. Katie. Why don't you step up, please?
The business community, and I have been talking about this quite a bit. Over the past couple of years, and I think there's awareness that other towns are adopting this. Um, I think that the concern is that it, the implication that that it will, um. Impact visitation and a perception of Montpelier. Not being a welcoming place for visitors and shoppers, because there's the concern. That there's visitor awareness about the tax. And as Adrian put it. That might not be true, but I think in this moment, there's just not enough. Knowledge or confidence that the business community has to feel comfortable with the local options ta- tax. So what I would recommend is not to rush into that, but to give it some substantial time to. Look into what the other towns are doing and to talk further with the business community, because there may be some education that needs to happen around it. And also the way that it could benefit our downtown, to be honest.
Tim.
Thanks, Katie. I was actually thinking kind of what you said, so you said it better, thanks. I, cause I started looking into this too, is is it's been coming up more. And trying to do a little research and understand. So my understanding is, that's not really understanding, I'm just trying to figure it out, but. Doing online work is that like Berlin just adopted it and it's looked like it's maybe even January first, it still hasn't even kicked in yet. Um, and they've had lags in having it. There's deadlines from the state and different things, so just because we have, if Montpelier approved it in March. I'm not sure that there's a. Cause we just don't know yet when it would actually go into effect, right? And so what, how can you count or plan on that for a budget process? Yeah, so, um, we, there's a couple, there's a lot on this. I've done actually a lot of work on this over the years, um. But we we have the local option rooms, meals and alcohol tax now. We've had that for, uh, four or five years. And we've seen no reported difference in sales. Due to that, well, we obviously had other reasons that affected people's, um, meals use, uh. When that happened, that would, that required a charter change, which. When that happened, that would, that required a charter change, which now we don't need. So after the voters approved it, it had to go to the legislature for a charter change, be signed by the governor. So it was about a two quarter lag time from the time we started. So we collected about a half year's worth of that. Tax. Now. So that's what we figured on if it were to happen. I think if we were to, if you were to put it on the ballot tonight and it were to pass, a conservative move would be to plan. To assume we would get half of it. In this next fiscal year. But again, we can't really count on the budget because we don't know if it'll pass. It's possible since we no longer need a charter change, that now it can just be done by statute, that the state can implement that faster. Because again, all they have to do is basically notify the businesses and say, instead of collecting six percent, collect seven percent and send it to us. And then they, they do have to do some sorting out, particularly since we share. Zip codes with Pearl Land and Nettle Sex to make sure they're sending the money to the right towns. So there's a little bit of legwork for them to do, but. You know, I would think that they could get it done by the first quarter, but who knows? They, you know, they, they're doing this a lot. The other piece to, to answer your question, and again, I'm not really, you know. I was asked to come up with options for how to deal with, with Montpelier Alive. You know, I think, I think we, we hear this that. You know, obviously we don't want to raise the taxes on business buildings and have the leases increases, and we don't want to have the local sales tax. So the option is that we increase the property tax on residents to pay for it, right? I mean, somebody's paying for it, we got, you know, how, how we do it. So. You know, what's the right formula here? And. So this is dated data, but when we first looked at this, I think in twenty twelve or thirteen, we, we tracked every town that had passed a local options tax. Track their sales data for ten years prior and then for as many years after. This existed. And there was, it was just no change, like, and we went to visit most of the towns, not all of them. And asked their city officials, town officials and their business people, you know. Did, and even, and we in fact asked the, the local businesses, who's your most vocal opponent? And we went and visited them. And said, how did this work? Well, I don't really like it, but honestly. Hasn't made any difference. And, you know, so I, 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 I'm not an economist. I can't, you know, I can't say for sure. But there does not seem to be any data that really has any impact. The, the number one. I mean, I, I hear the point about the impression that people are concerned about. The biggest concern that was raised previously was. We would be the only one in the region that had it. And now we're the only one in the region that doesn't have it. So maybe that's our advantage now, but. So I, you know, whatever you choose to do, I get it. And it's also having more conversation is better, but it seems like we're, we're caught in a. We can't raise the D I D. Because that will have a negative impact. We don't want to raise the property tax on local residents because that has a negative impact. So, you know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna handle it? Let's, you guys get the big bucks.
How much we will spend to set this system up? Like, because we talk about different things, right?
We don't spend anything. This, the state collects this for us. The state already collects sales tax. One of the reasons why. You know, we talk a lot about revenue streams, but actually cities and towns have very few revenue streams available to them, in part because we don't have mechanisms like. We couldn't do a local income tax, we'd have no way to be able to do that. But sales, the state taxes that already exist. They collect them for us. And they just add a percent. The businesses are already sending their money to the state on a quarterly basis. So they send it into the state. The state collects the extra percent. Takes their, so the state pays, you know, we pay in that. We pay thirty percent of the state, twenty five percent goes to the pilot fund, which has brought us from. Two hundred thousand dollars in pilot to one point two million dollars from all the other towns adopting this. And. They keep a, an admin share for themselves and then they just send us money. So for us, all we do is adopt it and. We don't really do, do anything else except get a check every month or transfer. Every quarter, excuse me.
So folks. We usually take our break at eight thirty. It's now eight forty two. This is a good time for people to. Take their break and. Think about it a little bit and think about where we are. And we'll be back in, at eight fifty two.
Back to order. And Sal was just about to speak before we started up.
Yes, yes, I was. I just, I was just gonna say that, that I think Peter Kellman was being discreet when he did mention that I was one of the people he talked to, who thought that deferring till next year for the sales tax, option, option tax on the ballot was something that I thought might be a good idea because it would give us time to educate folks. It's been on the ballot one time before and then it was voted down. I think if you're asking people to vote on something that's a tax that they might pay, they might vote no, if they don't know. I mean, look at all the questions we had tonight about it. But I'm told that we could do a sort of crash education program in the next five weeks, uh, if we put it on the ballot. And I don't know if there's any, I mean, the business community as well needs, needs to hear from, but it might be worth a try because this is our last opportunity to get it on the ballot until next March. We have had some good experience with the local meals tax. I think we'll supply, let the voters try.
Peter Kellman, I see you got your hand up. And it looks like you're still muted.
Am I muted now?
There we go. Now we can hear you.
Yes.
We hear you.
Okay. Just a point of order and a suggestion. If you're going to discuss the, 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 um, local option tax, then somebody needs to make a motion. Please, one of you make a motion to put this on the, the ballot and then discuss it and vote on it.
Thank you, Peter.
I move that we put a local uh, local sales options tax item on the ballot this March.
Thank you. Is there a second? And I can tell you, Adrian, yep. And I can tell you that I've been texting with the city clerk and the language could be shall the city adopt a 1% local option sales tax? Either saying, oh, as allowed by law or as provided by fourteen, twenty-four BSA section 138B. But other than that, it's, it's very simple. So now it's been moved and seconded. And that would be another item on the, uh, on the ballot if we, if we adopt it. Do we have any other, uh, discussion, Lauren?
Thanks. Um, I I'm gonna support this with the caveat of committing that if it passes, that we dedicate fifty thousand dollars to Montpelier Alive. So, and remove the DID, which would put at risk that if this doesn't pass, then we would have to scrounge thirty-nine thousand in the of the regular general fund budget, because I think we should stick to the thirty-nine thousand commitment, but potentially we could get more from Montpelier Alive. I think being able to benefit the businesses this way by not doing the, the tax, the DID tax, which is something that we know that they would pay. Um, and hearing the struggles um, that they're going through and just taking on another cost directly to the businesses as opposed to this tax, which is borne by um, people shopping in downtown, which includes Montpelier residents, but it also includes people from out of town. So it's a, it's, you know, one of the, one of the taxes that we're kind of sharing with tourists, neighboring community members and everyone who's using and benefiting from our community. So I think I would, I would support it in the event that we also, so I don't know how to would I, would I amend? That the increase. Yeah, the new. Yeah.
So, so Lauren, to clarify, are you, are you saying, suggesting there should be an amendment to the motion? Or are you suggesting that we should just among the seven of us make the commitment that we will do this if it passes? But conclude, realizing that it's not binding, you won't be here to make us do it.
No, well, so I guess I would do a potential motion to amend, just to keep it cleaner. That so put the local options tax on the ballot to the voters. Remove the increase to the DID. And either through this new local option tax, if it's approved by voters or binding the money in the general fund, we will hold true to our commitment to Montpelier Alive. Thirty-nine thousand?
One hundred.
One, thirty-nine thousand, one hundred.
All right, now we need to have.
A long motion, John, sorry.
It, it is a long motion. We need to have the exact language. And part of what I'm and we don't have a second yet, I'm aware of that. Part, part of what I'm thinking about is, um, is your amendment that it would be at would be dedicating fifty thousand to Montpelier Alive for fiscal two thousand twenty-six or as a permanent, uh, appropriation? Or how were you conce- conce- conceiving that?
I mean, I guess for FY twenty-six, just not thinking we could really bind future budget decisions that way, but it I, I would think it would be a logical place for future councils to, if it passes and we have that revenue stream, that money coming in through that mechanism could reasonably be part of the, you know, a way to keep funding our Montpelier Alive commitment.
Okay, uh, the clerk has his hand up.
There's no second.
Yeah, could you tell me the, the money amount again in that motion?
Well, so.
This is what I have with what you, with what was just added on. Uh, the amend the motion to remove the increase to the DID and either through this new local options tax or finding the money in the general fund, we will hold true to our commitment to Montpelier Life of the amount. And then for FY twenty-six, but I don't have that amount.
Thirty-nine thousand, one hundred.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can I make a suggestion here just to try to keep this clean? I think I think there's a two or three separate actions here. So one is, if you're you're gonna put the sales tax on the ballot and you want to amend the ballot question to dedicate fifty thousand dollars to Montpelier Alive, so voters see that. That if the local sales tax, you know, fifty thousand dollars, that would be one motion. Then we would amend the ballot question on the DID down to the prior amount. That's a separate issue. And then there'd be a third motion that you would pass to assure that Montpelier Alive got at least thirty-nine one. If all else fail. Right? Is that, does that make sense? It's that, that's kind of, because those are the three distinct things that are happening. They're not really, you know, I think if you put on a ballot item that says we're approval local option sales tax and we have fifty thousand this, but that means the DID is going up.
Yeah, and I was not proposing that as ballot language. I was proposing us coming to some kind of action, but then we could figure out how you reflect that in reasonable budget for about language for voters. But yeah, we could do it sequentially if that.
So, so your proposal is to adopt the 1% local option sales tax. Uh, and out of the proceeds, fifty thousand would go to Montpelier Alive.
Sure, we could do that first. And I'm, I'm proposing that just with the understanding that then we could
Do the other motions.
Get, do a different motion to not have to do the DID increase this year.
Is, is there a second to Lauren's motion? Any further discussion or any discussion? John, since we're looking at language that's going to go on the ballot. Do you have the language?
Uh, well, the language wasn't in the motion, but I can, uh, basically, I mean, I don't see why I couldn't put it in. I would modify actually what uh, what Hartford did. And just say, let me pull up what was just said. Hang on one second. Sorry, I have it written down here. Uh, Hartford said, shall the town assess a 1% tax on sales as allowed by Vermont law? And then we could append and out of the proceeds, fifty thousand dollars to go to Montpelier Alive.
For fiscal year two thousand twenty-six.
For fiscal years two thousand, which is presumed, well, no, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, sure.
That's your motion?
That great summary. Thanks, John.
Well, it's not a summary. It's, it's gonna be the motion and the ballot language. Is there a second to that as a motion to amend, uh, the underlying motion? It's a second, okay. Sorry, sorry, Palin. Yeah, you did, yeah. So now, now we have the motion. Do we have more discussion we need to do? Recognize there we're doing like three steps to get where we're trying to go. Palin.
So, um, I am okay with everything we just discussed and I am okay to put, uh, this on a ballot. Because as a city council, we don't vote for it, but we let public decide. So it is very important to me, we need to provide specific information, specific data and, um, every single detail that public can really decide, um, on their vote, uh, based on all the information we provide. So I know we don't have to make a motion for this, but just like, uh, I am sharing it out, but it will be kind of commitment for city council and city. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Are we ready to vote? Um, um, this is the, uh, Lawrence's motion to amend the motion. Well, are you, are you, are you ready to vote? All, all those in favor of Palin's motion or of Lauren's motion to amend Sal's motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. The, the main motion is amended, amended. Now we're to the main motion, which is shall the city adopt a 1% local option sales tax? With, uh, devoting fifty thousand dollars to Montpelier Alive in fiscal two thousand twenty-six.
I think it's showing that to the balance.
Right, okay. We have discussion on this motion. Carrie.
Um, so I've spoken before about, I don't like sales taxes because they're regressive. Um, I our property taxes are also somewhat regressive, but they do at least have some income sensitivity built into them. So there's some means to address that. So um, but I, uh, I, I can live with the idea of putting it to the voters and letting the voters decide. I, I do want to say that this is for all the talk that we've had about, we don't want taxes to go up. It feels really weird that we're talking about adding another tax. Um, so we just want to, you know, we just need to be really transparent about that, that we are talking about increasing taxes on people by adding a local options self-tax.
Yeah, I think that's, and, and we have not at all decided, except for this fifty thousand dollars, we haven't decided what we're gonna do with the money because we don't know if we're gonna get it. So it doesn't affect this year's budget, but we could decide any number of things. We could decide, well, we're gonna put it all into more paving. We could decide we're going to uh, reduce the property tax rate. There's, we could decide we're gonna hire uh, back some of the people we're, we're cutting. All those things are possible with this money. And when we don't, we we can't rely on them for the budget for this year because you don't know if it's gonna pass. So Palin.
So I agree with Carrie. That's why I was just trying to tell, we need more information, more data. Because if we just decide like based on this discussion generally, it can be perceived like that by the public. So you said one thing and you are doing another thing. So that's very important. I think maybe Montpelier Alive also being more active because during the break, we talked about uh, with Katie and like the perspective business and Montpelier can, um, provide the public, um, might change, um, the way they look about uh, to this tax. So, but I agree with you. Yeah, it's if it's a principal issue, we need to be really clarified what we want to do by, by offering this and putting this, um, to the ballot. Thank you.
All right, Tim.
I really didn't think coming in here tonight, I would favor a local options tax. I never have, um. But as we look at the issues before us and the pressures of the conversations we've been through for quite a while, it I mean, the, the issue for me tonight is that if it goes under the, the downtown improvement district, it really is putting this cost on a very small number of people and property owners in town. And I think actually has a bigger detrimental impact on our merchants and businesses in town. Um, and this local options tax, if it comes about is a way to spread that, those costs of valuable services that we really do want for our community with Montpelier Alive and possibly other things, um, over a greater base. So in that sense, I, I will favor it.
All right. Okay, Lauren.
Sorry to keep throwing ideas out, but I'm wondering, you know, we have spent so much time talking about the importance of infrastructure and we underfunded what our goal was for infrastructure this year. I wonder if we also put into it that we would dedicate how much did we cut? Three hundred thousand, two hundred thousand? But just from, you know, our goal amount, like I wonder if we say we would also dedicate you know, two hundred fifty, if, if funds allow.
Yeah, a hundred and thirty, we're sure.
Hundred thirty? So maybe we say we also would dedicate a hundred thousand to additional infrastructure projects like paving. Maybe we don't name paving, infrastructure project. I'm just like, if voters, this is where, you know, often we hear, like you said earlier, people are like, we need more paving, we need more things and we need lower taxes and you can't have both of those things. So if people are just explicit about what, what are we, what would we pay for with this? And it's just really clear to people. So Montpelier Alive, so this is something that our, you know, is there's concern it could affect our businesses. Uh, we don't have data that it would, but, um, you know, hopefully Montpelier Alive being able to help support the businesses very explicitly. And also, you know, infrastructure is another thing we underfunded that we've really prioritized, so.
This is another front of the amendment.
So this is an amendment to fifty thou, so the same language that John had read off, but fifty thousand for Montpelier Alive and a hundred thousand for additional infrastructure projects in FY twenty-six.
And is that, is a hundred thousand the right amount, Sarah?
Seven hundred and thirty, you said.
Okay. Yep.
So if public votes for this, can we change the amount? In the future, we have to go and ask for voting again because maybe in a couple of years, public will, will need more. Or Montpelier Alive will need more, so.
You can.
Is it binding us or?
If you s, if it's worded that it's for FY twenty-six, then you can word it differently in the future.
So that's what I'm asking. So we, do we have to put it on a ballot every year? For the, that's used budgets. That's, that's what I was asking.
You don't have to.
We could. That would be a choice if you wanted to dedicate it. Or you could just say, you know, make a council policy that we're gonna use X percent for this and X percent for this.
Carrie.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good question. And, um, so I just So I just want to make sure that the wording on the ballot doesn't pull in the local options tax just for FY twenty six along with. The designation of the funding that's just for FY twenty six. So we, so, so the, so it's clear that the wording is, we're gonna have a local options tax. And in FY twenty six, this amount will go here and this amount will go there. So it's just really clear that.
Yep.
We, we don't need to, yeah, okay.
Is there a second, bro? Tech, Lauren.
Just wording, Sal made a good point. Maybe we put the infrastructure first and maybe say at least a hundred thousand and. Do the Montpelier Alive second. If that's clear, John. What?
Yeah, let me, let me read this back to, um. Uh, hang on one second. Some cutting and pasting here. Uh, and I think honestly, the way, well, I'll read it back. Uh, I think this is what you, that you've landed at for another motion to amend, and I don't think I heard a second on that, this motion to amend.
We're still formulating it.
Shall the town, and I would suggest we change that to city. Um, shall the, and I'll just go ahead and do that. Just, you can stop me if you don't like it. Shall the city assess a one percent tax on sales as allowed by Vermont law and out of the proceeds at least a hundred and thousand, a hundred thousand dollars for additional infrastructure projects? And fifty thousand to go to Montpelier Alive for fiscal year twenty twenty six. And in my opinion, Carrie's point is well taken. That that reads as though you're just assessing. The whole, the whole thing lies to fiscal year twenty twenty six, and you would get in a position where the one percent sales tax. Might uh, be seen as to sunset on, under that language.
So John, here's a suggestion. Uh, break it up into two sentences. So. First sentence is, shall the city levy one percent sales tax? Uh, or a tax on all sales within the city as provided by law, question mark. Second sentence, if this measure is adopted. Out of the proceeds for fiscal two thousand twenty six, thirty thousand shall be. Shall go to Montpelier Alive and one hundred thousand dollars shall go to. Uh, infrastructure improvements.
Okay, so you had that in reverse order. Let me go back and fix that.
Yeah, fifty thousand for Montpelier Alive, sorry, John.
Oh, fifty thousand for Montpelier Alive. Is that the, you want that first or second?
I'm agnostic about that.
Was it, it, you just put it, you just switched it back to Montpelier Alive being first, so I'll just.
Yeah, not, it wasn't. With any thought, uh, that it should be that way.
Well, let me try reading this back to you all then. Uh, to amend the motion to reach, shall the city assess a one percent tax on sales within the city as allowed by Vermont law? If this measure is adopted, out of the, if this measure is adopted, comma. Out of the proceeds during. Uh, FY twenty twenty six, at least one hundred thousand dollars. For additional infrastructure projects and fifty thousand dollars to go to Montpelier Alive. Oof, that's a little clumsy.
Yeah, Tim, so kind of spending money we don't have and we have no track record to know. So what if it doesn't raise a hundred fifty thousand dollars? I mean, how are you gonna? Be up to?
Part two of this portion, theory of motion is to. Uh, reinstate the thirty nine one if it doesn't pass. We don't, we don't have anything. We don't have a part two A that says, that's what we did. If we don't.
You could, to Tim's point, if for some reason we didn't get a hundred and fifty thousand, if we could s- you could say up to a hundred thousand in a. Up. Just. I mean, you could always do more if you kept more, but we wouldn't want to restrict.
My other question is the DID, in our previous motion would be increasing. Anticipating covering the Montpelier Alive piece. But if we're not gonna do that, do we need language or at least another third in our?
Yeah.
Got it.
Alright.
I mean, another approach could be, but I think it would, I think, I feel like we didn't bring in fifty, that would be shocking. Hundred fifty, maybe, I mean, you could do a percentage and then, you know, at least. Twenty five percent will be spent on infrastructure projects or something for FY twenty six, and then the numbers don't matter, but. Whatever comes in, and that could be a huge boon to. Or it could be very little.
It, it would be shocking if, uh. I think it's gonna be more than the six hundred thousand dollars.
Well, not this year.
Not this year, I mean.
No, because we, we will get at best three quarters of the year.
Well, you got that. We'll see.
Uh, well, just because of the setup.
Yep.
So I've been careful. I mean, I really think, we should be thinking about half the year. We get three quarters, awesome. If we get the full year, great. Right, so everybody.
And, and up to, you think Bill, if, say we got a million dollars. That if it's up to a hundred thousand on infrastructure, that wouldn't limit, that you could go beyond that? Or are you bound? To not spend any more than a hundred thousand?
I mean. So.
To me, it's not like we're limiting how much we would spend.
Yeah, I think, I think we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna get a million dollars. At, at any rate, and I so really don't think we're gonna get a million dollars in FY twenty six, just because of the startup.
Yeah.
Um.
Just picking around.
And I think, having said that, the council can allocate revenues as you get it. So, you know, you get an unanticipated revenue, you can allocate it for whatever. Want, including just letting it go to the fund balance or including. Reducing the tax rate, but you know, you can decide how you want to handle that. Um. So I think what you're trying to do is send a clear indication to the voters of. You, how you expect to spend it. Uh, if, if you got, or, you know, you're kind of saying this is, maybe you could say. Whichever order you want, but like the first, the first fifty thousand dollars will go to Montpelier Alive, the second a hundred thousand dollars. You know, infrastructure and then beyond that.
Beyond that, we decide when we get it.
So then you've clearly established an order. And it doesn't restrict you that. I mean, I think, I, I don't know, I think, yeah. Or, or a percentage basis. If you're the long one, that would be the way to go, honestly, to say, you know. Every year. Montpelier Life gets X percent. Infrastructure gets X percent and the rest goes to. Tax remission.
Okay, so as a matter of parliamentary structure, where we are is. We've got your motion, Lauren, to amend the, the main motion. And. Are we, John Odom, are we clear on what the language is gonna be?
Well, no, I mean, that depends. There were a couple other things tossed out there, and if we go with the silence means approval, um. Then the last thing I heard would be, shall the city assess a one percent tax on sales within the city? As allowed by Vermont law, if this measure is adopted out of the proceeds during fiscal year twenty twenty six, the first fifty thousand dollars. Uh, to go, let me adjust that, will go to Montpelier Alive. And the next hundred and thou- hundred thousand dollars will go to infrastructure projects. So that's the last I heard. I don't know if that's where you all are at.
I think we do it this way. You don't have to say up to because it just, if less of that comes in, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah. Okay, so that's your, that's your motion, Lauren?
That is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, um. This is very complicated, and what, what I'm gonna suggest is that, uh. Be- because. The language is complicated. I'm gonna suggest that, uh, I'll just flag this now. That we have until tomorrow to actually approve the ballot, right? John?
Uh, strictly speaking, you have longer than that. The last day, it just needs to be posted. Um, by, oh shoot, you're gonna make me come up with this, aren't you? I think next Friday, but I'm, don't, don't quote me on that. So I would advise doing it tomorrow.
We used to also get held up by the printer deadline for the ballots.
Well, but that's, that's not the warning deadline.
Well, let, let me tell you, John, the reason I'm asking that is wondering if we need to build in. Another uh, meeting so we can. Consult with the uh, Secretary of State. As to the legality of this proposal, so that before we put it on the ballot.
Um, since we're basically aping the language of two other municipalities, you know, I would say it's fine.
Right.
Um, but, um, but yeah, I mean, it certainly wouldn't hurt. Uh, let's see, the first day I can post a warning. Is the twenty third. Last day. Oh, let me see, last day I can post a warning. Oh boy. I think is the second. The last day, the warning and notice for town meeting may be posted, but that posting includes appearing in a newspaper. So we have to allow enough time that I can be sure to get that there.
Okay.
And can you get ballots printed with the, the warning language on them in time? That was usually our problem in years past.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Yes, the ballots would be late because January thirtieth is when the printer is expecting. Uh, my final ballot language. Right, sorry, I misunderstood that.
Which is a week from tomorrow. So what, what I'm thinking is, and we have, I recognize we haven't voted on this, but we're about to. What I'm thinking is that, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, January twenty eighth is when they're expecting it from me. My bad. So that's, um, that's, that's next Tuesday.
Okay, um, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for vote on this motion. Uh, and the, the motion before us now is Lauren's motion to amend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And you opposed? Alright, is there any, any further discussion on the main motion or are we ready to just go forward? Okay.
I think this is a really, really good idea, and my planning hat came on, and so we have about. All over a month for, to the election, and so. I would love to see what a plan is to, you know, do some business roundtables, coordinate with Montpelier Alive, get some marketing out there. I'm more than happy to help. I think this is. An amazing opportunity for Montpelier and, you know, we could fund activities and even a, you know, increase Montpelier Alive and their, and their budget, so. I will volunteer myself to help in any way that I can to organize any efforts.
Great. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 And you opposed?
Which motion were you?
This is the main, this is, this is now the main motion with everything in it.
The original. So, shall the city assess a one percent tax on sales within the city as allowed by Vermont law? If this measure is adopted out of the proceeds during fiscal year twenty twenty six. The first fifty thousand dollars will go to Montpelier Alive, and the next hundred thousand dollars will go to infrastructure projects. That's what I had, if that's what everybody else.
Yeah, so we've got, so are you yes to Tim? Great, so six, nothing on that. Alright, now the next step is.
So the next step on the DID, um, you can actually deal with that when we get to the warning. Um. Cause you basically amend article five to the correct numbers, which I have. So that, I think your next question with the budget would be to pass a motion that says if the. Um. I don't know exactly how you word it, but basically if the local options tax doesn't pass, city council will find thirty nine one. Come up with a line from the general time. Can we discuss, you know, but we made that commitment. Something, I think that was the intent, right? So probably.
Carrie.
So would we be keeping the ballot language this, of, of the total amount of the budget the same? And we're just saying that.
Well, that's, I mean, that's your choice. You can either increase the budget by thirty nine one. And that would bump the tax rate up to five point oh nine percent. That's when, that's, then you've got, then they're getting it in both places. Um, or you can simply say if it doesn't pass, we can make sure that they're made whole.
Which is what I think. Idea was to take, take the increase out of.
Well, that's, there's, that's the third piece. There's three pieces. You just put the local options tax on the ballot, and you said the first fifty thousand goes to them. Second piece would be to change this ballot item down, back to the sixty two thousand and those five point one five cent. Tax rate, which is what it's always been. And then, but then that still leaves. The missing thirty nine thousand if the local options tax doesn't pass, because now they've lost it in both places. So what you want to do is make sure they've got the money somewhere. That you're, you're making that commitment, whether you take it from fund balance, whether you. Add it to your budget. That's how you choose to do that. That's the third step in. Actually, it's the second step. The third one's easy.
Paylon.
So. My whole heart says. To the addition, but I think if we put this amount back, we need to add everything it took off already. So from a principle perspective, uh, I support the other alternative, like finding that thirty nine thousand from somewhere else. Not increasing the tax rate from uh, four point seven to seven to five oh nine. So. That's my, um, thought. This is just. So, and Bill, did you mention that you will find that money?
So, so is your proposal that we add a, add a. Article on the ballot that says that it's the local, local option text?
Okay. We should not add Montpelier Alive thirty nine thousand to the proposed budget. Which will increase the tax rate to five point oh nine. So we should not do that. My question was to Bill. How can we find a ton of way to support Montpelier Alive? Without making that increase in the proposed budget.
Well, I mean, the easiest thing to do would be to take it from reserve. For one time. Um. That would be one thing, and then we could look at other options on the time thing, if we had to do it, but that would be, that would be a way we can guarantee that we can do it.
Carrie.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like a great idea to me. Um. You know, we're very, very there for emergencies and, um. Um, I, I think what, I, so the question is. How would we pay for that thirty nine thousand one hundred dollars if the local options tax doesn't pass? What would we cut? I mean, that brings us right back to, we have to cut something. And. You know, to just say, oh, we'll figure it out later, doesn't seem like a very responsible way to approach it. I think if we're committed to funding Montpelier Alive, then we should add it on to the budget. Knowing that, or expecting that it will be paid for not by property taxes. Because we're not the, we're not voting on, on a property tax rate. On the ballot. We're just voting on a total amount of money for the budget. And so. We could say it's our intention that the property tax rate will not be affected because we are hoping that this. Local options tax passes. But if it doesn't, then we're gonna have to pay for it out of property taxes.
So technically. You're putting on the ballot the amount of money to be raised by property tax. Like we're not putting on. A total budget. School puts on a total budget, not the tax now, but we put on the tax. And then we set that now, we could choose, I guess, when we set the tax rate in. You know, June, to say, we're, we just paying revenue, so we're not gonna. you know, June, to say, we're, we just paying revenue, so we're not gonna, something, you know, we're gonna use that to offset the tax rate, the local options, but you would if you wanted to be sure, using your argument, you would have to raise the amount of taxes on the ballot to cover, to be sure to cover.
That's definitely, definitely something.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a small enough amount of money and besides budget that we have, having over many years on council, watched, you know, some project we thought we were gonna do this year gets bumped six months and like money gets moved around and amounts larger than that has been found when we needed to. Um, if it's a priority and something that we committed to, you know, it could be, you bump off hiring two months or, you know, so I, I think we could find it and I think the reserve fund is, you know, if we got really stuck, but I don't think it would come to that. I think if we make this commitment, I do think in this case we could find it. I hope with the increase, Montpelier Alive will be a great partner in uh educating and encouraging support for the local options tax if they're able to be. Uh, cause it would be increased funding and it also could help not create this situation for the budget.
Uh, I agree. I was about to say more or less the same thing. I'm sure you said it better. And it doesn't turn the whole thing into a kind of a parlay. I mean, I think I think we just find it if we, if we need to, we, we can make the cut. If we have, if we have to, I'm betting we won't cut it.
So are we, I, I'm thinking of poor Katie over here with us saying, well, well, trust us, we're gonna be good for the money. And we'll find it from somewhere. And how do we turn that into, into a commitment? And, and one thing I was gonna say is that we can just, we can vote right now without going to uh the voters that will take it out of reserves if uh, if the local option tax doesn't pass. I don't know if that's what you were gonna say, Lauren.
Yeah, I was just thinking we would do a motion to commit to Montpelier Alive to contribute thirty-nine thousand one hundred in the event the local options tax does not pass with any budget. Yes.
I just wanna ask a question. So how about all the similar amounts we said we don't wanna see it like American Corps, my rights, like housing um home stuff, like they were all same amount, like forty, forty-five thousand. So again, I support Montpelier Alive, but we are just saying no to the people who really need that uh money and service. But if we wanna help and support, we should support everything. We cannot pick one specific organization. Yeah, it is. Yeah, I, again, I don't know how to.
So I think the.
Question, but it, I'm not really comfortable saying no to other items which are really, really important for our community, like we need Montpelier Alive.
Bill then.
Well, I think the, I think, I think.
You want a second bit?
Okay, okay. Motion was to cut. So I think the, the issue here is that, you know, we put out a proposal in December to increase the D I D to fund Montpelier Alive and it was different than the other things. And we have proceeded with the budget, all of our budget discussions and assumptions with that as the, the assumption. And now tonight, we're choosing to not do that and we're trying to find something else. So, so, you know, we've changed and that's fine. That's your prerogative. That's what you can do. And one, you know, and so one of the alternatives was to come up with the local options tax, which um you know, which uh may or may not pass. So it, while it would be great and it would give them more money, it's, it's become a risky proposition as opposed to a short thing. And, but you know, there's also the chance that Article Five gets voted down every year too. I mean, it passes, but it is on the ballot. So I, I, you know, we are trying to find a way to fund something that had a plan. Whether it was a good plan or not is another story, but it had a plan that nobody had questioned until tonight. And um, so here we are. So, so, you know, I can understand from your perspective that other things have not been funded and I can understand from the Montpelier Alive perspective that they've proceeded with an assumption that there would be some funding from them from some source. And now we're trying to make sure that that happens.
And before we go too much farther, um Lawrence made a motion and it hasn't been seconded yet and I'd like to see if there's a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Well, um. I understand what you're saying, Helen, but we've kind of arrived at this meeting with just a couple of items. We could reopen the whole thing, but I don't think we wanna do that. I think we got down to a number. And we're just, now we're trying to figure out uh sort of an alternative mechanism for, for funding it. And we've added, we've added an infrastructure item, really, so it's not like we're unraveling the last three weeks of work. We're just, we're dealing with what we came to this meeting. The way I'm thinking about it.
Adrian. Uh, will the clerk read, read, read the motion?
Okay, so what I've got is, uh, Lauren moved to commit to Montpelier Alive to contribute thirty-nine thousand one hundred dollars in the event the local options tax doesn't pass.
And that's what Sal seconded. All right, any, are we ready to vote on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, motion carries. Word two. All right, back to the third step of the process.
Well, so I.
Which is.
Do that until you get to the.
Number eleven.
But you make sure you're wrapped up with the budget. So you've actually made no changes to the budget.
Correct. At this point, we've made no changes to the budget. Is there any further motion regarding being budget? Hearing none is the opinion of the chair that the budget that's going on the uh ballot is what was adopted last week. All right. Item number eleven. Second public hearing on the warning. I opened, the, the public hearing is now open.
So I have some explanation to do here and the city clerk may want to help me. Since you last saw the warning, we've had some discussions with the school district. And we're actually trying to figure out how to get their number onto the ballot tonight, since they're also finalizing their budget. And the city clerk was really helpful with this, realizing that since the school district has uh split into its own district, it can actually set its own warning, doesn't need our approval. So what we're doing tonight is just approving the city meeting warning. They'll approve their own warning and the ballot will look slightly different. Instead of being all integrated, it'll be like the city items and then school items. It'll still all be one ballot. You'll still just get them all saved up, one printed ballot. It'll just look a little differently. Uh, that's the way Barry does it. That's the way others do it. Our is a holdover from when the school before the, before they became an independent district, when they were kind of a department of the city. Leftover department. So anyway, that's why you see this only has city items now. There are no school items on it. Um, and uh, so it has the same items that you saw last week, uh, with the addition of Article Twelve, which was the petitioned item that we received. And now you've added an article and you get to decide where that local options tax article goes, which, where you wanna put that on the ballot. And then the biggest thing that you just discussed, to be consistent, was Article Five. Right now, um, we'd wanna amend that article. Right now it says to levy a special assessment to raise a hundred and one thousand one hundred. That would drop to sixty-two thousand. And then when it says point, point zero seven eight per one hundred, that would drop to point zero five one five. And that's the tax rate that it's been since it was inception, since Montpelier Alive asked for it to be.
Bill, can you email that to me real quick?
Just.
I can. It's actually pretty easy. Uh.
Okay.
The warning, the hundred and one one drops to sixty-two thousand. And instead of zero point, zero point zero seven eight, it would be zero point zero five one five.
It would be zero point, sorry.
Zero point zero, so zero dollars point zero five one five.
Zero five one five.
One five, zero.
Five one five, right. Gotcha.
So that would be the change you need to reduce, be consistent with everything else you just did.
Are there any comments from the public on uh, on the budget, on the ballot as proposed?
I know the warning is proposed. People would like. Sure, I mean, just to be clear, I'll try to do this quickly. I know it's long late. Article one is to elect people to positions. Article two is the city budget, the twelve million, two seventy-eight, two two six. Article three is the compensation for the mayor. Article four is the compensation for the city council. Article five is the downtown improvement district with the amended number. Article six is the bond for the ladder truck. Article seven is the funding for the community fund. Article eight is the funding for the library. Article nine is the funding for Mosaic. Article ten is the funding for Central Vermont Home Health and Hospice. Article eleven is the uh authorization to expand the tax stabilization. And right now Article Twelve is the petitioned item, advisory item to affirm support for the Palestinian people. And now we have a thirteenth article about the local options tax that needs to be added, uh wherever you choose to add it.
And, and do you need motions to do these things or are we just gonna?
You should make a motion where you wanna put the thirteenth article. You should make a motion to amend Article Five. It could all be one motion and then to approve the whole thing, the whole ballot amendment. And then we'll probably get to get a clean copy for you all to sign. Not tonight.
Yeah, you have to come in and sign it tomorrow. As soon as we can get that would be great.
Is there, are, are there any comments from the public either here in the room or online about the uh the, the warning? See, oh, Peter Kelman.
I, I would just suggest that you put the um, the new uh, um amendment closer to the other financial and not at the end along with the Palestinian one. It, I think it, it, it will make more sense if it's, I, 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 I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know what number I'm talking about, but around Article Five, around there. That's just a suggestion.
No, thanks, Peter. I think that's a good suggestion. Before, before any of the uh appropriations to uh entities that are not part of city government. I'm, I'm not seeing any other comments from the public, so I'm going to close the public, public hearing on the warning. And now that comes, brings us to item eleven, approve final budget and warning. Now you need two motions, Bill.
Okay, so I'll, I guess I'll try to walk you through. So first would be a motion to amend Article Five to um to reduce the number from a hundred and one thousand to sixty-two thousand and to reduce the seven point eight cent tax rate to five point one five cent tax rate.
Is there that?
Well, it's zero, that's five cents. Zero point zero five dollars.
So does someone wanna make that motion?
I'll, I'll move her.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
And then your next motion would be where you wanna place, um, and then renumber, where you wanna place the uh local options tax article.
I think it should become Article Five.
That's what I think.
And then all the numbers after that would be subsequent.
Okay, remember, okay. Do you need a motion for that?
Well, you're gonna have to, yeah, you should do that and then remove the whole thing.
So Tim, you're moving that?
Yes.
And you're seconding it?
So the local option tax article would become number five and then all the other articles would add, would drop down.
Be renumbered.
Be renumbered accordingly.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then a final uh vote to approve the ballot with these amendments. And that, just so that you and everyone else is watching is clear, that's your final vote on the budget amount that goes on the ballot.
Extremely nitpicky, but I'm wondering if in Article, the old Article Six, where we say aerial ladder truck, do we say aerial ladder fire truck? People know, like, I don't know how many people know what a aerial ladder truck is. And I don't know if that's an accurate word, so chief, if that doesn't, isn't right, but like letting people know we're talking about a fire truck.
Like, that no fantastic thing.
Chief Libby, do you have any thoughts about that language?
I think adding fire in there is fine. It doesn't impact the intent.
Great.
Okay, so there's a motion to.
Uh, motion to.
Now seven.
Add the new Article Seven to read, replacement of the aerial ladder fire truck.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now the chair would entertain a motion to approve uh the final budget and warning. Move by Harold. Second by, by Sal. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for all your hard work on this, folks. It has it's been an experience. Now we're up to item thirteen, appoint ethics liaison. This should be quick.
Yes, um, we're gonna spend more time on this in March after the new council's elected, but we are required to name as, it has to be staff person to uh be our liaison. So we're recommending that um for now be the city manager or their designate.
And the chair would entertain a motion to uh appoint your city manager or the city managers designate me as uh the city's uh the fish, uh ethics liaison.
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I think we have no other business. You can move right to council reports if any. Adrian.
I have a council report, I'll keep it brief, but I'm really excited to share that we have our first ever Winter Fest coming up next weekend. Um, this was an idea that came about with a group of um folks from Montpelier Alive, from the rec department, from planning, um, the city staff and it's really the impetus of this economic development to bring people into our city during very dull tired months. Uh, we had activities that were planned, but we merged them under the header of Winter Fest. And so I encourage everyone to come out. Um, it begins on Friday, January thirty-first. We will have a tour of the um illuminated bridges on Friday night. Saturday, we will be up at the Country Club Road with the first onion, a fat bike demo. We have our first Daniel cardboard box sled derby, which is going to be hilarious and very. We have our first annual cardboard box sled derby, which is going to be hilarious and very fun. Um, and then we move our activities downtown, um, to encourage those to spend their money, meet the restaurants. Um, and we have all other activities happening at city center. And we will have the movie Groundhog Day and Skip from the Mountain Bears will be there and Onion River, um, Jen has organized a. A groundhog. Gathering or hunt. And so, there'll be groundhog in many businesses throughout downtown, and there'll be a map and there'll be prizes, so we really want people to get into the businesses. Find the groundhog, get some prizes. And um, just fill our stores as much as we can and enjoy the winter in Montpelier.
Thanks, Adrian, sounds like fun. Okay, Terry?
No report.
So.
Uh, no report.
Yeah.
Um, like you said, just like to thank everyone for. Staying civil and working through this process, it hasn't been fun, thanks very much to the staff for a lot of hard work and. For putting up with us, but I think in the end we all hit agreement on a budget tonight, and it's really important, so thanks.
Lauren.
Yeah, I would, would just echo that, it's been tough, we came in with a really challenging situation and. Appreciate everyone showing up week after week, the staff, the. Council and just trying to, trying to get to a resolution, I'm glad we're done, but thank you all.
Yeah, I also think for all the hard work. Including city council members. Mayor to the manager, right, sitting here is really. Putting, there's like a game, right, hot seat, now I, I understand why they name it like that. Uh, and I will visit uh youth committee members uh at uh Montpelier High School next week, um, Thursday, Thursday. And it will be our kind of first unofficial meeting to create a official public meetings for that committee. And I will ask for a group picture if they say yes. I love to share uh with the city council, um, yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Um. Mayor's report, I can be very brief, but I, I appreciate everybody's. Hard work and I think it's very. Very clear for one thing that we could, wouldn't be anywhere near where we are today if it weren't for the great work of all our staff. All the department heads and everybody who works in those departments are what. Makes city government uh. Work and, and provide services that, that the people of Montpelier account on. Um, and also the work of all the members of the. City council and being able to uh, be flexible and listen to. Each other's perspectives, which is very, very important. Um. I happened to be talking to uh. To a judge today who spent six years on the city council and he asked me how things were going. And I said, well, it's a tough year, and he said. Yeah, it seems like they always are, there's never. An easy year because. There's, there's never been a time where we've said, oh, we have. So much, we have more money than we know what to do with, we don't have any cost pressures, we're always. Trying to balance. The desire to provide uh. Excellent services to the community with the desire to keep uh. Taxes at a reasonable level, and so uh. It's never easy and. Thanks for all your work. Um. City clerk's report.
I'm not. Talking, there we go. Um, so just a quick reminder that there is a brief Board of Civil Authority meeting next Monday at five fifteen. Um, this is where the board chooses lots for the ballot order for candidates and the candidate deadline. Uh, is that Monday, so the deadline will be fifteen minutes before the meeting. Um, I have never seen anything to suggest that it has to be a motion, so it's not necessary. That a quorum be there, but I definitely, we definitely need some people there, so uh, I will send out a Zoom link. And uh, uh, with the meeting is gonna be at the, the manager's conference room in City Hall. Uh, other than that. Anybody's curious to know where we are as. Ballot. Information petitions and uh. Come in, I am updating the Montpelier Voter Guide. Which is at, you can find it through the. Clerk's webpage, but you can also just go straight to montpeliervoterguide.org. Although for some reason it's not coming up for me right now, but that'll show you, um, everyone who has. Uh, filed their petitions. Um, if they've sent me information on themselves, a picture and a blurb or something, then it'll link to that picture and blurb. And then after Monday's meeting, they'll be reflected in ballot order. Uh, so again, that's montpeliervoterguide.org or just go to the clerk's page of the website under elections and you'll find it.
You know I'll be at the meeting uh, Monday afternoon and. Anyone, any member of the Board of Civil Authority. Who participates by Zoom, well, you've just. Opted not to be one of the people drawing the names out of that.
Yeah. It's not that much, not uh. Not a fun one for Zoom.
Right, yeah. Bill, city manager's report.
Yeah, well, Katie just left, I was gonna congratulate Montpelier Alive for a great Spice on Snow. Event, um. Reminder that our next meeting is on February fifth, just us, I think, talking about my review. Then February twelve, uh, back to our regular business meeting in the twenty-sixth. Um. I really want to, so local options tax and budget information, we will be all over that, we normally do, we would do a full. Bridge page explaining that, we'll be doing the annual report, we'll be getting out information. On the line and uh, you know, sort of getting full court press out with information about all of that. Um. One more job for everyone. Um, and I, I. With regard, so thank you to you all for, for actually getting a budget done tonight, super, I'd like to thank our staff, they've, this was, you know. Uh, the mayor's right that there are, um. There's never a good year, but we've never started with twenty-four percent either, but you know, usually like we'll be at ten or eleven percent, oh, we gotta get it down. This was unlike anything any of us have ever seen with. You know, on top of factors like COVID flood. Health insurance and kind of the perfect storm, so um, very, very wearing on all of our people and um, and their people. Who have been, you know, kind of waiting anxiously to see the final outcome of all of this. Um, so many appreciations to our folks, you guys are the best and uh. And all, all the staff that's listening, um, thanks to you, thanks to the council for waiting through this tough conversation. And, and getting somewhere. We will be, uh, now that we have some sense of where we're gonna be, we will be actively regrouping, figuring out. You know, the best way to organize our work with the folks that we have, because that's what, that's what we do. Um, so there's that, so we'll be back at it uh tomorrow morning. So I have.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah.
We had regular meetings on the twelfth and twenty-sixth. I know that is school vacation week, I'm gonna be away that week too, but we. We do have to have a public information meeting on the budget and the bond within ten days, so at the very least we have to have that, that week. Uh, we'll have anything else.
We'll, we'll figure it out before then.
We could move a business meeting to the nineteenth and still, but we still have to, that would, that, that nineteenth is outside of the window that we can hold the information meeting. But we, so we'll have to. Something else.
So the city manager and I will figure out how to deal with that. And. At ten oh six P M, we are adjourned. Thank you.